Hello, hello, hello. Alrighty.
Hey.
Hi, everybody.
What's up bud?
We are good to go.
Good to go. Let's get stuck in straight away, uh, just because Storm can't figure out any of the technical issues with streaming. Uh, and with that, the party, the party found themselves after disembarking the Silent Tempest onto the, into the port town of Luskin, a heavily fogged over dreary, uh, large town on the Sword Coast. Uh, the party basically eventually had to deal with the disappearance of their crew and trying to figure out exactly where they were for long periods of time navigating through the, the heavy fog and mist on the sea, until they almost rampaged straight into the port infrastructure of the town. Uh, thankfully being able to stop themselves through a calamity of, uh, spells and quick thinking on the party. They were then met with the port master Derek Quill, DQ, double Q, known for his overzealous and particular fascination with the paperwork required to keep the town of Luskin safe, especially in these trying times as they have indicated to the party. Party were able to get their bearings in amongst the towns. It's a, it's a well-developed large town and had found themselves inside a tavern in the middle of the town in the, uh, mid afternoon, uh, as it was, the party were, were discovered. Were surprised to find that this photo was still only about two, three P M actually in the afternoon, which, which caused a lot of surprise and intrigue, uh, with that. Quick, uh, feedback that we've been getting from the residents in the area, in particular within the soggy biscuit itself. Uh, we've got Tilda, our, our half elf barkeep, as well as a few, uh, unremarkable, as they were described, uh, patrons, uh, who one of them instantly took, tried to kindly ask for their music not to be played and almost became public enemy number one for the party in the group. Um, and with that there, there were rumors and tension and paranoia rife throughout this town, but still almost like a, a low dull energy despite the intrigue, despite the confusion that's, that's been, uh, rampant throughout the town of Luskin. Uh, the party found themselves, they decided to bunker down for the night they had, um, although they'd seemed to have already quite a long sleep on the ship, or was it asleep? We don't know. Um, during, in the, is the mire, mire of the dead man. Um, with that there, and we find ourselves with the party again in the next morning, long rest, everybody's up full health, uh, spells and coming down and Tilda is the only one in the bar at the moment. No other patrons have entered the bar at this time and, uh, the party have figured it out. So first question is who's already downstairs? Who's up and early? Who's the late risers of this group?
Ryan and Tobin are up.
Yeah. So Tobin had to get up and pee because he was kind of scratching the door and maybe Ryan might've wanted to sleep in a little bit longer, but Tobin had to be, had to be let out. And Tobin is already downstairs, sitting near Ryan and, uh, has already been given a half bowl of water, uh, to, to start, uh, drinking with, uh, by Tilda. She didn't say anything. She just kind of just handed the water down even before Ryan needed to ask about it. Who's down with Ryan at breakfast?
I was gonna say Beau got up extra early so he could finally get off, uh, a few casts with his, you know, uh, the fishing equipment that I got in like episode three.
Yeah, very good.
Just off the, off the, off the side, wherever was closest, just he was down there getting a few casts off.
Okay.
Thinking about, thinking about things.
Cool. Could you do a wisdom saving throw for me please?
Oh, wonderful. I didn't think I was going to have to do that.
Obviously you don't have to go.
Eleven.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. Um, so as you're in the town, you had relative, you had a relatively quiet spell in there. Uh, you thought you could hear, uh, a little bit of singing or a voice on the wind, um, but nothing that uh, particularly caught your attention. So how, you tell me how you did with the fishing, uh, no need to roll. You tell me how successful or whatever day that you had.
Well, I'm gonna roll.
Okay. I bought these dice, I will use them.
It was a moderate, moderate success. Um, just a few little nibbles, no, no actual bites, no actual like, uh, we're going to say, but.
Yeah. So you, you're able to get.
Something was in the water.
I, I think even with that moderate roll, basically you were able to get two, three good decent sized fish in that. And the reason for that in particular that you notice is because there hasn't been a lot of activity in or in the port of the town. There isn't anywhere near as much fishing traffic or other, uh, patrons of the port area. You can already see this time the fish population is actually not as, um, uh, let's say dipped into, you know, so you were actually with, with, with very little effort. Um, you're able to see that. And as you're deciding to walk away, the only other person that was coming up was a, um, a, a short man who's opening up a shack at the, at the edge of the port. So he's even there, um, before the portmaster's coming in. So he's opening up the, the sea shack, uh, that you would now know from the sign above it and the sign on the board to be hookers are low. The sea shack.
Right.
So he, he's just, he, he's just quietly opening up like, you know, there's no, it's not like a metal shutter. It's more like boards and he's taking them down and quite rustic of a look.
Okay.
Uh, and as you can see in that, you can see obviously he's at the front and he's got a counter and he's got different bits and pieces. And in, in at the back there, you can see what looks like a, like an oven or a kiln.
Do we make eye contact? Like I heard him opening up. I'm sure he saw me just sitting down there.
He would have seen you, but he's more like kind of give me a side eye, not like aggressive, but he, he's not.
Full eye contact. That's fine. I'm not gonna.
Yeah.
If it was, if there was eye contact, he would, that would be polite, but.
Yeah. Well, well, he did. He kind of, kind of looked towards you, looked down, saw that you had a couple of things in the fish and kind of get like a you know? You know, gr- bit of a grumble and, and go on. And you can see in that kiln, he's starting to, you know, get some colds going and there's a little bit of smoke coming out, uh, but nothing, nothing heavy yet.
All right. I'm gonna take my little catch back to the, uh, as, as it gets a little bit later, or at least early, I'm gonna take it back inside.
Yeah.
Take my catch.
Let's say with that and Tobin being up, knowing his, his bedtime and things, and when he normally wakes up, let's say it's about eight, eight thirty by the time you're coming back in, um, with your, your finally used fishing gear. Um, and the, and the bucket, you've got, you've got three fish in that, three, three, three moderate sized fish. But Tilda, Tilda, Tilda just looks at you as you're walking in. Doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to react too much. You don't, you get the feeling it's not unusual for someone to be walking in with fish into her tavern, being a poor town at all.
Great. I'm gonna ask Tilda, Tilda, you, uh, know any good breakfasts that you, you could use as fish?
Uh, yeah, yeah, of course. Um, you can either have them, uh, cooked or uncooked.
Uh, just don't put them in chocolate cupcakes, please.
Yeah. Well, we'll take them. I, I prefer cooked fish.
Okay. Uh, and do you wanna, you, you know about our B Y O F, right?
Uh, I do not. No, is that, is that a common thing here?
Yeah, well, as you can imagine, as you imagine, we are a business. We, 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 we sell food and drink and uh, can't really be bringing in your own food. Uh, so if you'd like a, if you'd like a, a skinning and a, just a, a little skinning and deboning charge, uh, we'll prep them up for you right now.
Oh, that'd be perfect. Yeah. All right. Sounds good. Saves me the trouble.
Yeah, it does. She takes them off, yeah, and then she's gonna go into the back. And at the moment she's the only one working, but you guys are the only other patrons. Um, so she's not behind the bar. She's in that, uh, basically a bit of a makeshift kitchen and you can hear chopping and rough grating of the skin and stuff, but uh, you get the feel, it's still quite swift, the way she does it. So it's, it is very quick to chop, chop, chop. You know, it's, uh, she definitely knows a way around it. Um, this is not an unusual, uh, request for her. And, and you do get the feeling when she's saying that it was, it wasn't cheeky when she was asking that. It's just not the first time she's had to do it. So it's probably, you think it's more strange than she does. So.
Perfect.
So basically gi- given sort of a good sort of cooking time, let's say seventy eight minutes. Um, you know, nicely, you know, cooked with the skin on, you know, very, very nicely, well-prepared. Uh, and a few additional, uh, vegetables to go with that. Nothing, nothing, nothing fancy, just a few vegetables, uh, boiled. Um, and not presented like a, like a Michelin chef or anything. Uh, functional, but very tasty and nice and warm. And she naturally puts out three dishes onto the plate. Um, she assumes that it's for you and Ryan, but there's only two of you, but she still puts out three dishes.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Stella. That's fantastic.
You're welcome. You're, you're welcome, kid.
Ryan puts her plate on the floor for Tobin.
Okay. Cause there's still another one. So, so there's three dishes. Uh, there was one put in front of you, one put in front of Beau and then the third one. So you putting, are you putting yours or are you putting the third one in front of Tobin?
I wasn't sure if the third one was empty. Uh, yeah, just one of the plates is going on the floor.
Okay.
That's fine.
Uh, Tobin picks it up and he starts to nibble on it and, um, he basically gives that mad shake and unfortunately bits of fish kind of spread, uh, at your feet and across the bar until the looking and you can see she'll clean that up later on. Um, but you don't see any sort of aggression or annoyance with, from her at the dog.
Well, that's good that she's not mad at the dog.
Yeah. Cool. Anybody else, any, anybody else coming up? Sorry, Beau. Uh, I'll come back to you once.
No, it's fine. I was just.
Vampen. Okay, cool. Um, so who's the Claude and Tommy and Vitor? Um, have we got late sleepers or anybody else sort of coming in, uh, coming downstairs at that time, or you already up doing something else?
Cl- uh, Claude's out back practicing sword forms.
Okay.
Didn't sleep well.
Cool. Uh, you're gonna walk in through the back door?
Yeah, I'll come in. Uh, I guess they're on the same time as everybody else is coming down for breakfast.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so at that, basically, let's say you're walking in through the back door as, um, Tilda has laid down the three plates. Ryan has put one on down to, to Tobin. Uh, and Tilda just looks back. She's not surprised. She, she was up early as well. She saw you going out. She kind of heard you moving about, um, but not like a, oh, you, I'm annoyed that you kept me up last night. Just, she knows you, you've been out there for a little while.
Since three A M.
Yeah.
Probably, probably not far from that, yeah.
Can I, can I get you a drink, Claude?
Uh, water would be great. I appreciate it.
Okay. And, and she's gonna go back. She's gonna, she's gonna step over a little bit of the fish that Tobin flung around. Tobin's still sniffing around the ground, trying to pick up any of the last bits of fish that got spread about. Uh, and she's kind of just walking around that fish and she's going to go to, go to, go to tap and bring you over basically a, like a wooden mug, kind of like a, not quite full keg size, but more like a wooden mug of water.
Becoming.
Don't it have a morning ale as well? Because wash it down.
Yeah. So she, she comes over and she's got that as well. And she says, so it's, uh, there's a, there's a, it's busy, it's, it's actually another one of the Chesterfield, Chesterfield eels. Um, it's got elements of sea salt in there. Uh, it just, it just kind of emphasizes the natural strength of the area.
I'm gonna take a, the tail, the, the cut off the tail of the fish and put it in my ale. I saw a guy do this once.
She, she looks at it and goes, oh, it's been a while since I've seen that. But, uh, yeah, go ahead. That, that actually should sit quite well. Should, should sit in quite well. Uh, her facial expression doesn't really change. So it's not, it's not exactly a super pleasant smiley face, but at least her demeanor and the way she talks. You kind of just get the feeling it's not quite resting face. Um, it's just, uh, just keep it family friendly on that one.
Indifferent, just full indifference.
It's, it's, it's just, it's just a kind of a, uh, relatively stoic face. It's not a very expressive face.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool.
Claude, if you want, there's a third plate. Tobin didn't seem like he, uh, enjoyed it too much. I don't know if you want. Fresh fit, fresh, fresh sea bass. Just got it this, this morning. I was offering you Claude.
Oh, me? Uh, yeah, I'd rather not have fish for breakfast, but I appreciate it.
Yeah. Um, do you, do you wanna, uh, Claude, do you wanna, do you want like a porridge or anything? Um, you know, I, I know you've, you've, I know you've been up for a little while. Do you want something to get started around just water?
You have, you have bacon?
No, don't have bacon. We, yeah, no, we don't. Um, it hasn't been a, a real supply, run supply done in a little while. Um, it's more sort of oats and, and, and vegetables and stuff that we have, uh, closer by. Uh, we, we, we have a few, um, sort of fungal and mushroom dishes, you know, just sort of wild things that are in the area. Um, that we've kind of learned to prepare. Um, it, it is good, um, but it's up to yourself. You, you might be in a little bit, just more of a meat, meat form.
Por- porridge would be perfectly fine.
That's, she's, she's gonna go back and she's gonna make up a quick, quick porridge, uh, a little, little bit of, little bit of goat milk in there as well. And it's gonna come back and it's gonna be, um, nice and warm. Um, the, the bowl itself is a port, you know, maybe overlooked. It's a little bit wet itself. Uh, maybe it didn't get dried off quite as well, just a little bit wet. So you can get like the, the bowl itself is kind of a little bit cold, a little bit wet, but the porridge itself is still nice and flavorful. Um, and there is a strawberry in that as well, just to, just to give something.
Kind of looks sideways at the ale and fish for breakfast.
Yeah.
Kind of freaking me out.
I'll take a big gulp while staring Claude down. I'm used to fish, but I will admit that this is maybe not my all-time favorite drink.
Okay.
Or the drink often.
Okay. Uh, who's up last? Vitor or Tommy? Tommy, are you the, the latest sleeper or are you gonna be getting up?
Um, yeah. So Tommy did not sleep very, barely slept. And as the other folks.
Nobody gets the benefit of a long rest because nobody bloody slept well. You all, all your hit points are gone. No spells lost. Nobody bloody slept last night.
Everybody's exhausted.
Tommy, Tommy has been up for a couple of hours as people, other people went out. Tommy has been pacing the room back and forth, back and forth, and just very, his emotions are up and down. He's, he, he still feels so abandoned by the, his crew. He doesn't understand where they could have gone and he keeps making, he keeps thinking about, he, he's kind of just in movement while his brain's going back and forth, back and forth. Everyone's worried he'll stop, look in the mirror and like pep, talk himself. He's like, it's a new day. I can get another crew. I'm charming. I'm a good leader. There's definitely people in this town that would wanna be on my ship for sure, but but my other crew, they didn't stay very, and then he goes back into, it, it, it's just this up and down all morning. And also he, uh, he keeps, he's not thinking about it, but his hand keeps going to, into his, uh, coat pocket and he keeps rubbing the heart shaped key that he had taken off the former captain. Can I do any kind of roll to figure out if I have learned anything over the months of like us rebuilding the ship? Or did I, have I found anything that I think this key could have belonged to?
I'm gonna say that Tommy has never really shown, um, uh, a, a particular knack for academic research.
Okay.
Um, so basically unless you kind of were sort of told something or completely, even times when people have been in libraries, Tommy's never really been there or looking at bookshelves. Um, so no, you wouldn't have any further, you're kind of just hoping that you find the answer somewhere.
Then Tommy is kind of not even, not even really thinking about it, is absentmindedly rubbing it. Uh, the, almost looking for guidance from his former captain, but not in his head thinking that. It's just kind of where his hand is at right now as he's pacing back and forth.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, guys, anyone who's downstairs can basically every so often hear a little bit of a creak of the floorboards above you, just slightly rhythmic. Um, you, you can kind of assume it's relative from the room that one of you guys would be, but you don't know what it is. But there's a little bit of a creek, um, maybe the odd bit of dust or whatever will fall between the floorboards that are above you. Um, but more over the other tables as opposed to falling into your food. But you can hear the creaking of the, of the table back and forth. Okay. And, uh, Vitor.
I'm gonna sleep in.
Yeah, nice, nice. You're, you're gonna wake up the most refreshed. Um, yeah, and, um, basically the, the only sort of disturbance you heard was at some point in the night, um, your roommate Rusty, uh, left.
Uh huh.
Yeah. Uh, but you were kind of just half sleeping. You don't know if he came back in, but if you were to look over, like the bed's not there. Uh, and yeah, that's, that's what you think of at the moment.
All right. Um, I guess I'll, I'll smell breakfast and I'll slowly get up, start like wander about Rusty and then like slowly get together and start heading downstairs.
Strong aroma of sea bass.
Yeah, you're getting, you're getting, you're getting a sal- salt air, salt air eel, sea bass, some, some boiled vegetables, even a little bit of that sort of warmth of, of porridge and stuff as well. Um, and as you get to the bottom steps, you have to step over one little bit of fish flesh. Um, but as you do that, basically Tobin runs over and scoops it up and basically gets the, the last bit of that at your feet and gives you a wee tail wag as he sees you up.
All right. I'm gonna pet him because I miss them. Feel like I haven't interacted with him in a while.
Yeah. Uh, that's good. I'm not gonna make you roll in case you slap the pump. Yeah, you, you don't fail when trying to, when trying to pet Tobin. Uh, and he just excitedly takes, takes the, takes the scratches behind the ear, uh, turns around basically so you can scratch the, the bottom of the tail, just round the butt. Um, and maybe, maybe, do you give him a belly rub? When he's standing there?
Yeah, he's earned it.
It's, it seems like he loves, like he's, it's like you do give really good belly rubs, right?
Yeah.
Uh, and he can just feel that.
I've heard that.
Yeah. So he, he gets that and then he basically pops back over beside Ryan. And he's just kind of sitting and he's kind of standing up. You can see him on his back legs and he's looking out the window and just the, the nose is going crazy. All this, all the new smells in the area and you're at the coast and the sea. So his nose going, going crazy, just looking out for stuff. Okay. Uh, Tommy, do you eventually come downstairs?
I do, yeah. Probably after tell, it's probably been another twenty minutes. But Tommy, as Tommy's coming downstairs, he has the full look of confidence on his face, like he's hiding. Any emotions that people saw yesterday is gone. He's back to very s- like upright. What comes on, comes on walking down. He is very confident, says, good morning to everybody. It's gonna be another wonderful day. And just kind of sits down.
Insight check on Tommy.
Uh, I'm gonna ask Tommy to do a performance check and then anybody who's actually looking at Tommy can do an insight check.
Oh, fucking bastard.
I wrote, I wrote a twenty-four.
Twenty-four, okay.
I gotta do it.
Uh, un- unless anybody gets higher than twenty-four, you guys, you guys are convinced that Tommy thinks that he's confident. Like this is almost Tommy in his element. He's like, man, nothing gets this guy down, you know? He's just resilient and he's, you know, and almost to the point of they even care about his crew, you know, it's like, yeah, sure, you know, the ship's fine. He's still got a ship and, and, and he's a, uh, he's a well-known hero and he's thinking about all of his accomplishments. As far as you're concerned, he's kind of strutting downstairs. And Tilda goes, what can I get you? What can I get you, Tommy?
Uh, I'm good for the morning. Just a water will do me. Gotta be clear-headed. It's gonna be a big day.
Yeah. Uh, and then Vitor, sorry, um, what can I get you?
I think I'm gonna hold off on the fish as well. Not, not my favorite, but I'll, I'll take a little porridge and some water as well.
Yeah, cool. And over to the table, uh, there's, there's enough for, there's basically enough for, with it being the five you, there's two on each side and, and whoever came last is sitting on the end of the table. Uh, the end of the table looks out a window down the street. Um, and everybody else, so obviously it's either the, the, the window is either to your left or to your right. Uh, Ryan is the one sitting closest to the window because she's got Tobin there and Tobin's looking out the window as well. And Tilda comes over, water, porridge, the other half of the strawberry that, that you can see that went on to Claude's porridge is on Vitor's porridge. Uh, so there's no wasted, no wasted food there. Uh, yeah. So, uh, and basically she goes, you guys got a plan? What you wanna do today? Um, you know, you got, looking to get back out in the water? Or what are you thinking?
I mean, do you know of, uh, people that could use some work around town?
Yeah, well, to be honest.
We're gonna investigate some things though, Tommy?
Yeah, of course.
A lighthouse or something like that?
Yeah, we got, that, that lighthouse should get fixed. It's not, luckily I was very, uh, you know, focused and I had a great crew, but, uh, that could have been, could have been relaxing out there with that lighthouse not pointing the right way.
Yeah. I mean, we're not desperate for a crew yet. We're not leaving. The circus hasn't even been in.
Yeah, you know, I just, it's just good to like, you know, just get, get my, you know, get, get us out there and, uh, you know, just start talking to people and, uh, see who, who's looking for opportunities.
Tommy, inspiration dice please, just because you're playing that self-assuredness very well. Thank you very much. You've been able to convey that. Uh, okay.
That's a good, yeah, it's a, why don't we hit up, uh, we could probably hit up the, the gear. What's it called? The, uh, the shop. Uh, what was it called? Uh, Barrel and, Barrel and the Blade. Maybe pick up some, uh, some supplies to go break into that lighthouse since it's abandoned. Maybe find some good, uh, hardworking folk there.
An abandoned lighthouse?
So, I, I, yeah, until.
No, at the Bladen.
Oh, okay. Gotcha, gotcha.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Until this bitch coming over and she goes, yeah, she goes, yeah, um, if you're looking for, if you're looking for Calric, um, he's, he's not there. Um, he's, no one's seen him for a little while. Uh, and then, uh, if you wanna get a lay-in, you're looking for work, uh, you could always talk to the mayor, um, might have a bit of an idea of what's going on. And I don't think there's not a lot of traffic going on the port at the moment. So I don't think there's a, a lot going on there. So yeah, it's just, you're, you're free. You, you've, you've got, you've got board here. Um, you know, you've, you, you basically, as you can imagine, you guys are paid for the rooms, you know, but you've got it for the week. If you want it, you know, so you can always pop back here anytime. And yeah, just, just be careful even when, if you are out in the roads, out and about, like the fog is still at this point, it's nearly become abnormal. Like it's been months now of this, of this fog. Uh, and there's been reports of disturbances out in the road for anyone who's been able to come in. Um, even those, those laborers who got attacked as well. So there's, there's, there's plenty happening. I don't have anything, you know? I know a lot of people come in. I'm not even a big one for rumors, but sure, there's always the, the, the weekly digest, you know, um, with rumors galore and that. So there's, there's a lot going on. I don't have anything to give you at the moment. Um, but if you wanna get a little bit more insight onto anything, ask away. I'll, I'll answer how I can. Uh, but I'm not much of a gossip. I'm definitely not like Mistress Valu. Um, she's definitely the queen for that. So yeah, there's, there's, there's plenty to do and, um, you're free to come and go as much as you like.
You, you said Kelric, the owner of Blade and Barrel? He's been missing?
No, he's, he's the.
He's the lighthouse keeper, K- K- Calric Hallow. Yeah, he's, he's, he's a lighthouse keeper. Um, uh, Rogar actually is the owner of, uh, bar, of the, the barrel and blade. Rogar.
Rogar, alright. Good to know.
Yeah.
Hey Claude, did you, you were out back, right? You were outside.
Yeah, I was, I was doing a little training this morning.
Did you hear any like, it was like almost singing or whispers like out there, outside? I swear I heard something this morning.
Nope. You were, you were focused in, you're, you're at the back of the building, you're away from the, uh, you're at the opposite side of the water. Um, you, and you were pretty clued in, you're, you've been obviously relatively introverted and contemplative last few while, as well as focused on your training. So.
Sorry, I, I was pretty focused. I, I didn't, nothing cut, cut through.
Oh, that's fine. I just thought I heard something. That's all.
Do you hear something suspicious, you think?
No, nothing out of the, I mean, it just seemed a little, I don't know, someone was out there singing, I guess. I just couldn't really catch where singer, yeah.
Huh.
Just thought maybe.
I would have noticed.
T- T- Tilda kind of leans over, goes, it wasn't, was it a, like a male voice or a, or female voice?
Uh, I couldn't really catch too much what it was. I didn't really hear it very well. Um.
Well, if, if, if it was porter, you'd know, put it that way. Um, but no, it's just, just, just be wary. There's always superstitions about what's out on the water and, you know, you get a little bit of little bit of loneliness, a little bit of sea madness and all of a sudden people are seeing things and you know, so just, you know, I think you're lucky to just kind of stay in your group. Um, but unfortunately I've seen too many times of. Um but unfortunately, I've seen too many times of um men kind of caught out in their own and. Seeing things that they want to see, put it that way.
Ah, I see, alright, the tricks of the ocean, see, that's what I stick to. Lakes and rivers.
Trick of the mind and then you put the emptiness and the vastness of the ocean out there, along with the the that fog. It's uh seems to be playing tricks, seems to be playing tricks.
Ocean is both beautiful and scary.
Yes, it is, yes, it is, Tommy. Can I get you guys anything else while while I'm here or you only just leave you to your day?
Uh I think we're fine right now.
Well, I'm just gonna be at the back, I'm just gonna be prepping some vegetables for the for the lunch rush earlier on. Um and see if see if any supplies come in today, otherwise it'll be a. Another creative broth of some sort for lunch.
Is there anything, anything we can try to get for you while we're out?
Well, fish is always appreciated, you know, and and you know, if that like, if that's the case, you know. As I said, you've got the board, you know, and 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 fish is always popular in this area, so anything like that will gladly go towards your board. Um but don't be, don't be worrying too much, don't be letting it get in the way of your of your business, unless you have the time.
Course not, alright, sounds good.
Yeah. Well, I'm sorry for the disturbance this evening, the um. Um there was a, you know, Daryl, you know, he just, he just had a bit of a a loss recently, he's the one that. Said about uh not wanting to hear music at the moment.
Ah.
Um so, you know, hopefully, hope he doesn't dissuade, he didn't mean anything by it, just. Yeah, yes, he's been, like like most people around here, we're having tough times just with the. Uh I think, I think his, I think his his, I think the jinx was involved with. His partner, um she's been in a in in a in a bit of a stupor for a while, it's not a coma or anything, just. It's almost like an extreme tiredness, so.
I mean, that that explains it, I mean, you just seems very odd that even in. Uh somber times, you don't want to hear any music.
Yeah, so hopefully he didn't offend, I don't think he intended to offend. Um but, you know, so just, you know, I will be, if if he is, like, I'm not barring him from the place, he didn't cause any trouble. He didn't escalate anything, he just left yesterday, so if you do see him in the wire, please uh just don't. Uh pick on him, I think he's been through enough recently.
Well, hopefully we didn't scare him away, that's.
No, I don't, I don't think so, to be honest, I don't think he's go, yeah, I don't think he's got much more much else to go. Uh he's he's not fishing anymore, he's spent most of his time at home looking after her. So, yeah. I've seen I've seen I've seen worse reactions to that type of dispute though, so I'm, I'd say I'm pretty lucky that didn't that didn't escalate further.
Yeah, Claude, the uh Vitor, we'll try to keep that, keep those tempers at bay.
Everybody's cool with me? Yeah, I'm chilling.
All is good.
Yeah, uh Ryan, um you get a a little bit of whining from Tobin. Uh as you can see, Tobin is basically watching a couple of people out in the street. Sort of walking by, some people are going, you can see sort of shops starting to open up a bit, it's getting to say about nine thirty. At this stage, the shops are starting to open and a. One thing you can notice when you look out the window is that while people are moving, there there's almost a weird imbalance between the energy that you're seeing. With people, there's there's almost a natural low energy of people as they're walking around. Um yet, small conflicts or disagreements seem to. Escalate quite quickly, you know, so if somebody accidentally bumps somebody, you can see quite a. Quite a a passionate reaction to that, even if it quickly dissipates. Um so you don't, it it's a weird balance of low energy but on edge. That that doesn't seem to kind of mesh quite well, uh and Tobin's kind of watching a few people, i- if if more people than other. Uh sorry, uh more people are moving slightly into the middle of the town than they are going towards the the port town. So that seems to be the general direction of let's call it a commute at the moment.
Oh yeah, I think, yeah, Ryan's gonna turn to the group, I think we should actually. I agree with Tommy, let's let's meet some people in this town, um and she starts buckling the armor on to Tobin to go out.
Yeah.
Keeping it to herself a little, what she's observing, because she's not quite sure if there's anything substantial there, but really. For once agreeing with Tommy.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Didn't really catch you for a social butterfly, you wanna go meet people?
We're not meeting them, we're just. Getting among them, getting a feel for the vibes.
Yeah.
Observing, very scientific.
I never thought I'd hear your character say vibes, that's wonderful.
Also, when you look out, anyone who's looking outside, as I said, what's kind of catching you again is it's it's nine thirty, you know, it's it's. It's a seaside and there's still a lot of fog, but it's not rainy, it's not wet, it's not miserable. It's it's just dull and the fog or the mist itself. Slightly rolls, but it doesn't look unusual, it looks like a natural movement, but it is very low, it is quite thick and. It doesn't seem to be coming from any one particular direction, so it's not just rolling in off the sea, it's not just coming down from. Any mountains or scenery nearby, it seems to be moving all around. Okay, so I imagine everyone's kind of finishing up their breakfast at the moment, Tobin's uh loving his new armor. Um and he's he's doing that thing where, you know, like when they find something, they lie on their back and they kind of. He's trying to get to kind of sit on them properly, um but it seems to sit there and you can hear the the little. Uh little rustle or little jitter uh clinging of those coins that are in there. Uh I believe that it's still the the platinum coins, I think are still in those boxes, or at least two of them. Um of the five, I think, uh unless unless Tommy's pocket knows otherwise. Um.
It's a brand, it's a brand new day.
Yeah, so, okay, so basically Tobin's ready to go, Tobin's uh he he will, he's at the door, he's kind of excited, he's kind of looking around. Uh but he's more watching where you're going as opposed to necessarily being drawn to go anywhere in particular.
Ryan's just gonna start following the crowd outside, not really. Um aware if the group is following or not.
Okay, cool. Um right, Ryan, as you're going along, you are seeing a few people, you walk past um Derek Quill. The portmaster, he just gives you, just gives you a bit of a nod, ready? Uh and briskly makes his way towards the the port, you can see the shack near the port is still there. And you can see a uh little bit of, little bit of hubbub, not not a huge amount of people, maybe sort of five to ten. Moving in a general direction towards the middle of the town, uh if you were to look at it on the map there. Uh they're going down this path in the middle, so you've kind of come out, they're going this way, there's very few people coming this way. Some of them are making their way in towards town and you can start seeing shops like um the 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 blade, the the barrel and the blade. Um and um also Miss Mistress Valu's shop, which is called. Um something uh amazing, uh that I will find out later on when you decide to investigate it. Yeah, that's that's the reason you don't know, um so yeah. Yeah, it's it's actually called Dulcet Dulcet Drawers and Drapes, uh textiles and travel wear, so yeah.
Am I getting a hint of any vibes?
What are the vibes?
Like any uh any like. Yeah.
Mr. DM, what's her what's her vibe level?
So so are you you, so is this like uh Ryan almost kind of not looking for trouble but trying to see like. What's what's standing out to her?
Yeah, because there's just something about the crowd. The crowd's energy and that they're mostly moving in the same direction, that's just really bothering her and it's grabbed her attention to where she's singularly focused on it.
Okay, as other people kind of overtake you, so you've stepped out and other people are walking past you. You can you can hear little bits of conversation, you can hear things like, i- is he okay? I- i- is he gonna be okay? Because, oh no, he he's he's very lucky to be honest, um but you know, we'll. We we'll see what the mayor thinks, uh and hopefully they'll get down to the bottom of this, um but. You know, I I I've never really been a big fan of that guy, he's a bit of a loner and the other person goes, the mayor? A loner? But no, 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 not him, the the big guy, the big guy, the big, you know. Like, oh, yeah, 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 him, and uh you can hear it not as as they walk past.
It just lightly tap, touch one on the shoulders or whatever, just excuse me, what's what's happening?
Oh, you, oh, um there's a, there's like a a a bit of, there's a trial, to be honest, it's not it's not a formal thing, but there's. There's basically almost a mini town meeting going on at the moment with the mayor, um a couple of our our family were attacked, actually, my. My nephew and my brother-in-law, they were attacked um out in the forest. Uh they're 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 labors, they're the timber labors, um and just, I don't know where they got attacked by this. Um by just this 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 weirdo, you you see him sometimes in town, I don't know his name. Um but yeah, they're, we're gonna see if we can sort this out once and for all.
That's all Ryan says, just huh.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, so just for a moment, remember the party and look back. Can I see anybody through the window or the door if anybody's stepped out?
Uh I finished, Bo would have been finishing his uh drink and uh probably been stepping out and looking for where we in, might have went.
Okay, I'll just shoot a message to you. And be like, hey, weird things happening in the city square, where that was the the center, uh.
Yeah.
Let's go.
Alright, I'm gonna look back and be like, alright guys, we gotta go. Something's going on.
Just, is there's always that part of me that's like, I hope I have. I'm trying to trying to create intrigue without sounding like real without real run, you can do whatever you want, Grant. Um so yeah.
Ryan said there's uh something going on in the uh in the the town center, I don't know, maybe like.
Trying to rely on her friends for, yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go check it out.
Ooh, okay.
I mean.
Very good.
Ryan, for the first time, agreed with Tommy, so Tommy was would would definitely a hundred percent be coming to follow. And but also two things, I I want, uh I can roll for it, one, when I step out, I want to look at the dock, is my ship still at the dock?
Yes.
Okay.
Still the dock, if anything, Derek Quill is out there and he's taking lots of extra notes and. He he's he's flipping his flip chart and there's like two, three pages that he's already gone through and there, you get the feeling there's at least. Six or seven more pages of checks that he's gonna do, um or not.
Tommy gives gives a little wave and also I wanna do an observation or whatever check. Is there any signage that says Luskin at all? Because Tommy, during his pacing over the hours of the morning, has this, i- it's one of those, when you travel a lot. You know where you were going and you know where you're at right now, but he has this weird feeling that I haven't gone far enough. And but but I was told, I'm in Luskin, so I want to see is there any signage anywhere of. Lus- like a Luskin sign, poster, anything at all?
Yeah, um no, no, no blatant one, you, what you would think though is. You know, you've got you've got the port area nearby, I do believe Derek said Luskin.
He did, he.
Which 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 is the only sort of indication you've got, and if you were to try to think about why there might not be a big sign, it's because you don't really see a lot of big signs. In the town itself, you're more likely to see that on the outskirts of a town, of someone who's entering. Uh but no, you don't see any any sort of other sign that would indicate whether you actually are in Luskin or not.
Okay, Tommy then, yeah, Tommy took Derek for his word.
You you did, you 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 did know about uh Lusk or from what you remember about Luskin, Luskin having a lighthouse? So that also kind of supports that this might be Luskin.
Yeah, it's. Tommy's very going with what he was told, but he has that little small itch in the back of his head, that's just of just naturally traveling. On the sea that he feels like, I'm being told where I'm at, but I almost feel like I haven't gone there far enough. But eh but he doesn't tell that to anybody, it's just that little itch in the back of his head, but he follows, he he goes out to the road to follow uh wherever he's going.
Okay, fantastic. Uh okay, cool, anybody else want to do anything in the bar, in the tavern before you. Make your way uh out to the front of the building and start walking?
I'll follow Bo.
Okay. Cool, um Tobin's out front with 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 Ryan. Um and if anything, you can all see Derek at the Derek Quill Portmaster going through his checks. You can see a little bit more smoke bill and bill went out of that shack, um you can see a small, uh as you're going in towards the town. You can see a relatively dark shop that has the name The Barrel and Blade on it. Um the door's open, still looks quite dark on the inside and uh on the other side of the street as you're walking in, you see uh another little shop. Um which is being meticulously cleaned uh by a a gnomish woman. He's kind of dusting everything down for anything and she's, you know, there's there's like drapes on the door, around the door and. Um so she's doing her best to kind of upkeep that, um and even as you go along, maybe little bits of. Like seaweed on the ground, nothing, you know, uh or or a bit of paper kind of floating by in the wind. And people making their way towards a a building in the in the center of the town. Um that people seem to be congregating around and you can see one guard outside this building. As well, do you want to walk towards that or do you want to check out any other buildings along the way uh first?
Ryan's singularly focused still, so.
Okay, fantastic, okay.
I was, I was gonna be right behind Ryan.
Yeah, okay, cool. Uh this this is the building you come up to, so it it it's a little bit big, it's a little bit bigger in terms of, you can see there's that square, but at the side, but that building does continue. A little bit down the line. Uh it almost looks like um like it used to be a factory. Uh but this is now the new sort of makeshift entrance on that, okay, so it does. It does ha- it does have a good distance that goes along the back, you can see one guard who's sitting there at the front. Uh a a wooden door, people congregating, some people moving into the into the building and a little sign that just says only good news inside. On that, so this is, this is the Luskin City Hall. Um and your your knowledge of this is actually being a town, this is almost like an aspiration, this is a relatively new sign. Uh you can almost get the feeling that they they want to be considered a city, or they have ambitions to be a city. Um so they're calling this City Hall, uh and that that door is open, people are able to walk through, the guard doesn't seem to be. Looking at anybody or making checks for anybody, uh people are asking him questions and he's answering as best he can and letting them go in.
Ryan's gonna walk in and is there seating inside?
Uh yeah, so there there's a bit of seating, uh there's only a few seats left, uh there's maybe seats for about, let's say. Um four people and there's some standing room near the back and at the front, you can see what looks like a little bit of a podium. And um and then there's a sort of a circular um sort of makeshift stage in that. Not like the 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 noose in in Dragon in in Daggerford where's the big makeshift stand. So you can see there's sitting, there's some sitting space, there's quite a few people in there, uh there's only some seating seating left, uh won't be enough for everybody to sit though.
Because. Ryan's just gonna stand on the back wall so she can observe everybody and call Tobin to heal.
Okay, uh and people look over towards Ryan and take a look at her and goes, oh, what a lovely dog, you might have a pet him?
I do mind.
Hmm, uh Tobin looks disappointed at this response, uh because he was looking for some pets, but he's not getting any pets, so but he's still, he's with Ryan. You know, if Ryan says no one pets him, then that's fine, so he's gonna take a seat.
She'll reach down and scratch his head, just as a consolation.
Yeah, exactly, he's he's gonna wake like that, that's that's enough for him, okay, cool.
Does his armor say, I'm working, please don't pet?
He wasn't an emotional support animal at the last round.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, let's say seating wise, uh there are four seats, uh Ryan's already decided to stand at the moment. There's two near the front, um one in the middle, um one in the middle slightly closer to the main stage. Uh the two at the front, when I say the front, they're near that sort of makeshift stage, and then there's one in the row that's directly in front of Ryan. So who wants to sit where or who wants to stand, what's your thoughts?
Uh, Bo's gonna take a seat in the middle. He was thinking about staying, but he's gonna take that seat in the middle.
Okay.
He did say there was a seat in the middle, right?
Yep, see, see, see the middle, uh, on the far, so you've got, let's say, two front row on the right, one middle on the left. And Ryan's near the door and there's a seat like in that back row, just in front of her. So any, anyone is there, I could basically lean back and talk to Ryan, uh, right there.
I'll stand in the back as well.
Okay, you're gonna take a seat or you're gonna stand?
Stand.
Okay, cool. Uh, Tommy and Vitor, um, what do you guys wanna do?
Uh, Tommy, Tommy's also gonna stand because he is very much people watching. He's trying to figure out crew members. So he's just, he's just kinda taking a glance across the whole crowd. Not so much paying attention to what's going on in the front, just, okay, maybe he's pretty tall and he looks like he could. Probably pull the sails pretty well and that guy, okay.
Okay, uh, Vitor, first of all, are you dressed in your, um, not bright clothing? Are you more in your sort of, uh, tell gear? Let's call it that.
I'm in my tell gear, no clown gear today.
Okay, that's, you're, you're, yes, you're kinda keeping to yourself. Tell, where do you wanna sit? Do you wanna sit up near the front? Kinda to be able to hear what's going on? Or are you gonna stand with all the crew kids at the back of the classroom?
I'm gonna, let me sit. I wanna sit.
Yeah, okay, cool. Well, there's one up near the front. Uh, so you've got, um, Tommy and Claude, you're standing at the, you're standing at the back. If I can remember, uh, any of you wanna take that seat? That's at the back.
Uh, yeah, I already sat, I'll sit.
You're sitting, you're sitting in the middle.
That's right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stay standing. It's easier to see over everybody if I'm standing than sitting.
Yeah. Uh, Claude, there's a woman beside you, basically walks up, uh, and just goes, sorry, excuse me, is that seat taken?
Help yourself, as far as I know.
Thank you very much. So she takes the seat now. So you guys are standing at the back. There's no seat in front of you guys. The, um. Bo is in the middle. Bo, from your direction in the middle, you can kinda see slightly through the side curtain. Of, let's call this sort of makeshift stage area. There's a large door behind this stage, sort of big open door. Um, and, uh.
Can I get a good look through that? Can I?
It, it, it's closed at the moment. It's closed.
Oh, I thought you said I thought it's a little bit, alright.
Sorry, sorry, sorry. You, you can see into the side curtain. So imagine like a stage and you can almost kinda see the side stage. And yeah, and you, and you, you can, you, you can see a guy in a, in a, a relative, relatively nice robe, having sort of one last bit of a conversation. Uh, you get the feeling he's about to come on stage. And people, uh, tell, uh, you're at the front. Um, you can see near your seat, there's a set of stairs off to your right going down. And you hear that door open, uh, as you're sitting there. So you're the first one to notice this door kinda down below you is opening. Okay?
Okay.
Right. So as that's happening, basically this door opens and a, a gentleman comes on stage. He goes, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much for coming in today. It's beautiful morning today. Isn't it a lovely morning, Luskin, everybody? Um, and I just wanna thank everybody for coming out today and doing their civic duty. Uh, basically, we're, we're not gonna take too long today. We just want to be able to, uh, get to the bottom of this. It, it's, it's not a, uh, we're not looking for blame. We're just looking to find out the truth, you know? We just wanna be able to settle, settle people's nerves and make sure everything is happening okay, right? Um, and, uh, I get, and he goes, I can't, yeah, I know, it was the mayor. And he takes off the mayor thing and puts it, and goes, you know, I'm just, I'm just Ireland. You know me, you know me, my family's been here for years. Um, just, I just, we needed someone to be upfront, so I'll take care of this. Uh, I'm gonna ask, um, our. Uh, our first, let's say, witness of the day, uh, to come up. I please ask that there be no shouting or, or, um, intimidation from the crowd.
Sorry, it's my dog.
What perfect timing, no shouting, eh?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I was scanning, I was scanning.
That's good. Um, and, uh, I thought that briefly distracts the mayor, but he gets back to you. Just keep it down, keep it down, please. Please, we're, we're here to hear everybody's point of view. And you can hear all the guys goes, yeah, what do you mean? Please, please, everybody, this, it's not a court. It's not a court. Just, we're just here to everything. We just wanna be able to work this out. Um, and, and we're gonna, we're gonna ask, um, um, our friend, you've seen him about the town. I know he's, I know he's not a resident, but we just, we need to hear his point of view. Uh, so I'm gonna ask Tuggles to come up here. Um, with, with, with one of our guards. Uh, it's as much for his protection as anything else. Like I said, please don't be throwing anything. Uh, food and stuff is scarce enough as it is. We don't want any food waste. Uh, so please don't be throwing anything. Um, and then we have to clean it up. So please don't be throwing anything. Uh, at that point, as you, uh, Vitor had seen the door open and coming up the stage. Is an individual who's going to, uh, out of character, uh, describe himself as he walks up the stairs.
Alright, uh, so before you, you see this just lumbering. You know, mountain of a half man, half orc thing, just big, big ripped green mountain of. Skin and tattoos and some bottom jaw tusks and, you know, you're, you're stereotypical, you know, half orc.
Um, we're not racist here. We don't have stereotypes.
I love orcs.
Nice.
Yeah.
You know, just, just big burly, somber, not, uh. Doesn't, doesn't necessarily look like he's too comfortable being in, in the city for any reason. But, uh, you know, he's here. He, he's here, he's here because, you know, these kind guards asked him to come and he's, he's here to. They think I'm a criminal or something? I don't know, we'll find out. I'm here to, I'm here to clear my name though, whatever is going on.
Yeah, and, and the mayor at that point goes, um, and I'm gonna ask you to introduce yourself in a second, sir. Uh, but as you can see, uh, there are no chains on this man. Uh, we're just here to get everybody's opinion. Uh, there's been a, if, we're, to, to be honest, a pretty serious incident has happened. Uh, but you've been cooperative the whole time. Uh, so we're not here, uh, you're not a prisoner. Uh, but we do need to know what's going on and to get your point of view on that. We heard from, um, our other witnesses. Uh, yesterday, uh, when it came to some of the, 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 the outcomes of that and so unfortunately, some of the consequences. Of that interaction, but we, we're here to hear, here to, we are here to hear your side of things. And he's got a big smile on his face and he's, he, as much as he's talking to, to the, to the, the next witness here. You can see he's all, he's, he's very much, uh, kinda making sure the crowd sees him and sees that he's got a smile on his face. And, and, and quieten people down. If there's any sort of hush, any sort of hush or, uh, people trying to shout out from the back, he's, he's kinda just putting his hand. Um, and we, we'd like to hear your side. So first of all, could you please introduce yourself, sir?
Uh, yes, uh, some of you, some of you may know me. I've, I've met a few of you in passing. But, uh, for those of you who don't, my name is Tuggles.
You're a freak!
Okay, alright, there's, there's no need for that.
Calm down, calm down. Just like I said, please, let everyone get to say their bits in peace, please, sorry, please, please go ahead, sir.
You know, come, come to the half-orc village and people will think you look weird, regular man.
Oh, let's just, let's just, let's just calm it down. We don't want any escalations here. We've seen way too much that recently. Please, sir, just stay on point.
So, I, I mean, I was in the forest, you know, doing, doing what I do. I'm, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a naturalist, you know, I'm, 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 I'm a nature lover. I'm, I, I'm. My, my goal in life is to be there for the, for the forest, you know, I'm, I'm here for the forest. So when I'm walking through the forest and I stumble upon a group of dudes who are just willy-nilly chopping down, chopping down trees with no regard. I understand the need, right? But like, you know, there was a family of squirrels living in that tree and you didn't even chew them out. You just, you just cut it down with them in there? I gotta talk to you guys, right? I mean, and then.
I, I, I can understand that, but I, I do have to, I do have to correct you, sir. Uh, i- it's not willy-nilly. They do, they did have a permit for that, so they were allowed to be there. Um, unfortunately, you know, we, we, we all, we all love animals here. We all wanna look after them. Uh, as we're not saying that, uh, we just, we just, just, if you know why, just tell us, tell us what actually happened, like, how, you know?
I mean, these, these guys, I've confronted them and I thought in a reasonable way and, and out of nowhere, they started antagonizing me. And it, one thing led to another and I, I don't know, it got a little bit fuzzy, you know, I don't really. Recall off the top of my, there was a lot going on. The, the adrenaline was pumping. There was, there was a lot going, I don't, the situation was fuzzy. But I, I mean, at, at the end of the day, I don't even, these guys disappeared. I don't even know. They ran off or something. I don't. I don't know what happened to them. They were not, they were there and then they were gone. So I don't know what they think that I did, but.
Okay, so I, as you can see off to the side, basically there's a few guys that are, you know, they're, they're in bandages and they, you know, they've got like. A, a band on their head and one of them's got a sl- arm in a sling. And they're going, that's a load of shit. He attacked us for no reason. He completely, you know. And the, and the other guy's back and you get the feeling that this kinda little mini mob are just supporting each other with all their answers. And they go, he attacked us from out of nowhere. Uh, it was, it was crazy. You know, now he's trying to say, he didn't attack us?
On the, the people saying that he attacked them?
Yep, yeah, yeah, yeah. You'll be the only one who knows the answer, cause no one's sitting beside you at the moment. So everyone else, he can get the answer, but he, he won't say anyone.
Just an eleven.
Y- well, you, you can see evidence of what you think is of injuries and you can, you can hear their voice. Um, you, you don't get any sort of particular, um, like the bandages, there, there's still a, a little bit of blood on some of them. And, and, and the, the wrist of one of the guys is, does seem pretty mangled, uh, in the sling. So you don't think this is faking? Uh, and there seems to be, from your perspective, uh, genuine, uh, anger. And, uh, uh, from your perspective with that. So, and, and then the mayor comes up and goes, so sir, you, you say you didn't even tack. You didn't even attack these men?
No, I don't. I mean, we, we started, there was maybe a little bit of shoving and then things kind of. Things kinda get a little, a little bit difficult to remember, but I mean, out of nowhere, one, one second I'm here arguing with these guys and then the next second. I mean, they're nowhere to be found and I'm, I'm being ambushed. I don't, they think that I'm attacking them. I was the one that was attacked by these creatures. I don't, I mean, I don't, I, I had to fight them off for my life and.
Okay, this, this is the first time we're hearing about this. But I, I had a brief chat with you yesterday, so nothing you say is a, a real surprise to me, but I wanted to make sure. In the air of transparency in this city of Luskin, uh, we're the town built on this. Um, you said, uh, you were attacked by creatures. Describe these creatures.
Uh, they, I don't know, they kind of looked like this semblance of man, but made of. Tree and vine. I don't. It's nothing good. It, and they could do, they just came at me out of nowhere.
Okay, okay. Um, well, I, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to consult some people about that. So basically, these three men attacked you? Um, then, then how did, how did our labors?
I, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I don't even remember how. I just remember being attacked and then everything kind of got fuzzy. I don't remember the end of the fight even. I just kind of.
Yeah.
Woke, like I came to, almost as if I was passed out, but I wasn't. It was, it was very odd and.
Okay.
Next thing I know, the guards are here asking to take me in, so I don't.
That is a load of shit. And these guys are, they're, they're pretty good. There were, there were no other monsters. This guy just attacked us out of nowhere. That, I go, calm down, please, please, everybody, calm down, calm down. Uh, we, we, you know, we're getting into. You know, hearsay and you said, and he said, all this sort of stuff. Um, I, I'm gonna. Mr. Tuggles, um, I, I want, I want to believe you. I'm, I, I'm, I am one of you. I, I welcome everybody into this town. Every, you know, potential resident and, and voter, uh, in this town. I want everybody to feel welcome here. But we have to look after ourselves. These men were doing a job. Um, we have had situations of, uh, swift escalations. Uh, into arguments which, uh, you know, as a town, we have to really look at ourselves. And someone goes, it's the jinx. And you go, oh, it's just calm down. Just, it's not, not, just, just tempers getting a flare. There's nothing going on. Uh, you were, that's what, that's what I said, that's what I heard, what about the man? The rumble, 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 lots of people going on. Everybody calm down, calm, 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 right? We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna put a, put a cease to today's, um, proceedings. Um, but before we end that, we do have to discuss the, and basically. Uh, you see the mayor get distracted briefly one second, uh, and he, excuse me one second. And he goes over to the edge of the stage at the front and there's a, there's a figure, um, in a hood, quite a large figure in a hood. Um, you can't, you can't see anything and the mayor leans over and goes, okay. Oh, you, you have heard of these things? Are, are there many of them? Oh, wow, okay. Um, and before he comes back to say, the, 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 the fellow in the, in the hood sort of slips away. Uh, off to the side, uh, and, and outdoor, everyone's, everyone's there. And the mayor takes his time and you can see a very confused look in his face. He goes. It, it has come to my attention, um, that. Although we don't have another witness, um, this is, this, this is very troubling. Um, Mr. Tuggles, unfortunately, our, our workers have been injured. Uh, there will be a debt to society for yourself, uh, but we're not dealing with imprisonment here. Uh, we want to be, want you to be able to take your skills and put them towards the good of our society and the growth of our town. So, uh, we're going to let you away and that caused a, what the, what about my arm? What about my nose? And goes, at the end of these, everyone's proceedings, um, and, and. You can see, he's trying to control the crowd and everybody, everybody, just remember. Um, warm bread, warm hearts. This is your mayor speaking. Thank you, everybody. Uh, and basically kinda sculls off to the side and, um, and the guard walks with. Miss, walks with Tuggles, uh, towards the side. Uh, Vitor, they're walking in front of you. Um, I know you screamed with at the dog, so Tobin sat exactly where he needed to go. Um, and he stayed there with Ryan and he's walking past in front of you. Uh, Bodak, you were able to see the mayor go there. You just saw the back of the headed figure. Sorry?
I'm gonna try to follow them, like through the crowd.
Yeah, a- as you get through here, so basically there's a lot of, it, it's not a massive, like, it's not like a mini riot. But you know, there's a lot of, you know, whispering and hustle and bustle and people really confused. Um. But you don't get the feeling of any sort of feeling of injustice with anybody in the crowd, uh, other than the guys who were injured, right? Maybe some odd family members, right? But even then, it's not like a, a blood rage. It's more of a, a fear and like, oh my God. And, and some people going, I was never quite sure about him, you know? I'm kinda glad I don't, he doesn't live near me. Uh, and, and little sort of whispers of that, which you get or about Tuggles. Um, and just before they go down the stairs, um, the guard is there and Tuggles basically has a quick conversation with the guard. And guard says, Tuggles, I'm, I'm not sure, like, you know, you know, I believe you. Uh, but you can see the injuries from those guys, like those are real injuries. I looked after those guys. They really got hurt. Um, and I want to believe you, man, but like, I, I, I know how big and strong you are. Bo, you're kinda hearing this as you're walking towards Tuggles. You're kinda getting to the end of that. Yeah, you're kinda getting, getting towards, you're kinda hearing the end of this. So Tuggles, I'm just gonna say, just, just try to lay low for a little bit, okay? Uh, we, we'll keep in contact with, with yourself and the mayor. Um, there's probably something you can do to kinda make it up. Um, but you, you know, we don't. Yes, sorry.
Uh, is, was this a trial today? Is this man, is this individual, where, where is this individual's representation? Seems like they're being grilled and it doesn't seem like he has.
He's not under arrest. He came here on his own free will, isn't that right, Tuggles? You're using cooperating.
Yeah.
But you talked, you were, you were talking about punitive, you know, restitutions.
It's, it's, it's more about, like, like unfortunately, we can't, we can't just let anybody do what, what they want. We're trying to come up with a fair system. We don't have an official prison here. Uh, we don't want people clogging up cells. When we know that, we'll. But based on the character, uh that they can, they can do some good and, and I know Tuggles can do some good. Um, uh, just, you can't really argue with that, like you, you saw their injuries, you saw their injuries.
No, but why don't you give the individual a chance to prove it? I mean, all you're asking for is, here's, I mean, you're asking for everybody's.
Yeah.
Story, but.
Can you, can you do an, can you do an insider perception on the guard?
I'll do, I guess, either the same, yeah, yeah. Uh, that's fourteen.
Okay, so you speaking up quickly is kind of putting him on edge a little bit, alright? And, and, and you're gonna see a reaction from him, it, it's not overboard, but he's gonna go, s- sir, sir, please don't escalate this. Like, it's, it's really not that, like, it's, it's between, it's between Mister Tuggles and, and, and the town, uh he is cooperating, aren't you Mister Tuggles? Uh, so please, please settle down, settle, we, we've seen way too many of these disturbances recently, it, it's not worth it. It's not, sir, sir, it's not worth this effort, uh we're just gonna ask, ask everyone to take a step back, sir, please. Everyone's starting, everyone's starting to look at you now, uh, you know, Tommy, Claude, Rain at the back, you can see. You can hear the voice of the guy rising above the crowd, you can see everyone kind of looking towards it. Um, uh, Veator, you're closer, you can hear word for word what's happening. Um, the guy doesn't sound aggressive, he's, he's scared, like he's scared, right? Somebody's coming up to him and he, you get the feeling he's. He's seen something and he's seen the way these things have gotten out of hand recently, and he's just trying to keep things and he's, he started to panic a little bit. Uh, and he's, uh, and, um. Tuggles, Tuggles, is there anything you want to do at the moment?
Um, yeah, I'll just, I'll kind of put my hand on, on the back in a friendly manner of both of these people. This, this random dude who just walked up in the garden, I'll be like, fellas, 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 you know, and I'll try to just kind of.
Yeah.
Calm the situation down a little bit and be like, I think we're, we're all okay here, you know, I'd, I understand the way that the, the laws of your city work, I might not. Loved it, you know, I might not love being here, being a part of it, but I understand that things happen for a reason. I'm, I, I'll take the community service and I'll, I'll deal with the mayor, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll figure all of this out, I think we're, we're leaving today in, in a good position. As I kind of glance over my shoulder, the dudes are all beat to hell, I'm like, I think, I think we're all leaving here in a good way today.
The, tho- those guys are giving you daggers, uh because, as far as, yeah.
Can I, uh, roll an insight check on, on Tuggles here? Cause he seems to put forth a very calm demeanor, I wanna see if he's being.
Yeah, yeah, and, and I don't think, I don't think Tuggles is trying to perform or anything, so I don't think there's a, a check. You're just trying to get your perception of whether you think his reaction is genuine.
Yeah, that's a twenty-two.
As far as you're concerned, uh, Tuggles has, is using a combination of his physical, uh, of, of his, his physicality. And his lack of fear in this situation to really help calm things down. Um, and, and, and he's getting this across, um, Tuggles, would you describe yourself as quite an elegant orc or? How is, or is it, this is more, no, it's more of a sort of a broken English type thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm very gruff and, and picture, picture a man who has lived in the woods for. Always of his life, for, for just all of it, the whole thing, uh, you know, so it's short to the point, I, I can. I can handle society, but I'm very much like, alright, get me done and get me out of here.
Yeah, so Claude, you, you can tell from, it's, it's a man of few words, um, but there doesn't seem to be any. Any sort of aggression in what he's saying, there doesn't seem to be any signs of deceit that you can tell from your position at the back of the room.
And that's, see, sir, this is, I'm not here to cause trouble, I just wanted to make sure an individual such as himself, he doesn't seem. Accustomed to what we, what we would deem normal society, I just wanted to make sure that he had, they had.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, he's the one acting calm and you're the one picking trouble, okay, sir?
I don't believe I, uh, came at this too aggressively.
I'm not here to argue, I'm just asking you to back away, just please, I, I, I don't, I don't want to cause anything. Uh, there's a lot of people around here, just please, lower your voice. I, it's a weird one, cause like he's telling you, it's, it's that ca- it's that classic thing where somebody goes, I don't care, they say in a really angry voice, he goes like, calm down. And he's, I, he's starting, he's looking at Tuggles and every time he kind of looks at Tuggles, he's not worried about Tuggles, like Tuggles is the physically. Uh, you know, is a physical specimen here beside him, um, like. Almost kind of overlooking him and yet he's more scared of you than he is of the massive half-orc beside him.
I'm gonna shoot, uh, message to, uh, Tuggles. And, uh, just gonna say, uh, come, come find us if you need us, uh, look for the battle dog.
Tuggles is gonna look extremely just distraught on his face, it's like this voice in his brain and he's like, what the heck? What? And he's like looking around, up, up, above him.
And, and this has caused the guard to freak out, cause now the, now the calm Tuggles is like, he's freaking out, goes, Tuggles, Tuggles, calm down, calm down, just, just take a breath. Uh, Tuggles, you, uh, uh, Tuggles I imagine is not playing this off while he's like, what is this voice, I don't know what's going on. Uh, this is freaking the guard out, uh, he go, you, so just, you, I'm gonna ask you to step back or, um. We're gonna have to tell, tell the mayor, yeah.
I'm gonna, I, I tried to step back a while ago, I'm gonna step back.
Ryan's back there watching all this, getting really triggered from what happened to her in her own village, getting persecuted by her own people. And she's like getting really shocky right now, there's little arcs of lightning coming out of her hands. And she's just focused.
A few women at the back and a few other ones, they're starting to look, whoa, whoa, um, uh, they're, they're starting to see this lightning, they're starting to get a little bit scared. They've been totally honest, they're starting to back away, so this little kind of circle opening of people is stepping away from, from Ryan at the moment, Tommy, Claude. Tobin, all there, uh, do you guys want to do anything to help, uh, Ryan?
Just kind of usher her away, be like, come on, it's not, it's not worth the trouble. It's not worth the trouble, there's nothing wrong here, we'll figure it out.
Okay, uh, Ryan, inspiration dice, just keep that for yourself, please. So, okay.
As well.
Uh, yeah, and, and now, now that Bo stepped back, like the guard is like full on looking at Tuggles, cause he known this whole time that. The Tuggles wanted to not be here, Tuggles would not be here, uh, cause this guard is not doing, not able to do anything. To do this, Tuggles, what sort of height are you approximately?
Uh, like seven and a half ish, between seven, seven and a half feet, somewhere in that ballpark.
You're giant, you're absolutely massive, right? This guy, this guy is like five-five, okay? Uh, lots of gear, like good two feet above, and yet for the longest while, he was more concerned with what Bo's reaction could lead to than he was you. And then you getting startled, startled him, uh, and he's like, it's just. Um, Tuggles, just please, just please go, right, we, we'll be in contact, um. Uh, we, we'll send somebody out for you, you, you don't have to stay, like just stay in around the town, please, you don't have to stay in town. Just around town where we can find you, uh, preferably not near the, the current lumber site, okay? Please.
Yeah, yes, of, of course, of course, I say as I'm like, as I'm like smacking, like, like balled up fist kind of lightly hitting myself on the side of the head to like. Figure out what the hell that just was in there.
Yeah, okay, cool, uh, Tommy, can you do a, a perception check on please?
Sixteen.
Okay, uh, while Claude, uh, the reason I asked you, cause Claude is looking after Ryan and sort of escorting, right? Uh, Tommy, um, those injured individuals talking amongst themselves have kind of. A, a grumbly, sort of grumbling amongst themselves, a few members of the family, they've left out through a side entrance. On their side.
Okay, Tommy.
You, you can, you've noticed they've left and everyone else is starting to kind of peter out a little bit.
Tommy has been leaned back, back against the, the wall with his arms crossed, he's enjoying this, the somewhat chaos. Uh, unfolding, but from the very moment that Tuggles walked out. Tommy, right away was like, I gotta get him on my crew, that's, that dude's fucking huge, he's perfect. But, and so Tommy is just also just kind of sat back, cause there's been, there's been moments where a pirate has been the center of attention in not great ways. So, it's for him to not be the one that's getting the ridicule or getting, you know, judged, he kind of sits back and is just taking it all in. And seeing how Tuggles reacts to everything, but, uh, Tommy's very set on, I need to get that guy on my, on my crew.
Yeah, okay, as you're looking around as well, there's a combination where you do see some people, even though it's the morning time. Uh, some people are letting in some really brave, you know, uh, as they go along and the other people are definitely sort of kind of agitated and. Kind of grumbling amongst themselves, they were sort of, there, there seems to be no sort of middle ground. Of this type of energy at the moment, um, as you're, as you're sort of going along.
That, that energy doesn't bother Tommy, Tommy, Tommy has been in so many different environments as far as people and. Just being a pirate on a ship that like weird nervous energy or slightly aggressive energy. It, it's all whatever to Tommy, so he's just really sitting back, just taking in the whole scene.
Okay, um, Tuggles, um, the guard basically goes, he goes, uh, like, I, I, this is the sort of time where I sort of give you back your belongings. You only have this, um, you know, piece of parchment with you, so I'm gonna give that back to you. Um, your, your, your weapons and stuff, they're, they're, they're all here for you, uh, please account for it so that you know nothing is missing. Um, but as you know, you know, you were sleeping downstairs last night, uh, these things never left your sight. They were just outside of your room, so hopefully you, you, you trust and believe that. Um, but if there are any issues, please come back to me, uh, and we'll go from there, so here, here's your parchment and here's your, your gear. Please, uh, but please, please, please stay, try to stay out of trouble, okay? Stay in here, please try to stay out of trouble.
I'm gonna kind of just grump, not, not, not any words, just kind of grunts and acknowledge, kind of bundle my things up and make for the door.
Fantastic, okay, cool, so the side door off to your side, Bo, you're, you've backed off a little bit, uh, Tommy. Uh, the mayor is off the stage, he's at sort of like a side curtain, um, so imagine like, imagine like a town hall. There's a little platform and a little bit off to the side, um, and if anything, you can hear a bit of activity. Uh, on the other side of those big doors on the other side, um, and now that you look around, um, you know, and you're. Kind of caught off that sort of, the warm bread, warmer hearts idea, uh, you can see a few more, uh, motifs. Around it, you can see symbols of green, you can see symbols of, of, um, you know, bags of flour and stuff out there. Around the place as well.
I'm gonna head back to the, uh, to the group.
Okay, cool. Uh, Tell, uh, Bo's gonna walk up beside you, he's gonna walk in your direction first, um, in the direction of the rest of the group. Do you want to go with him or is there anything you want to look out for?
I'll go with Bo.
Right, okay, everyone's at the back of the group, um, there's this, Bo is your, Bo and Tell, as you're making your way towards the front. You're starting to notice this, um, this crowd as well, um, and there's confusion and there's. Did you see the size that? And, and that goes, and, and he goes, yeah, but that's, that's Billy's kid, you know, like, you know, he, he's always been a, he's always been a bit of a hothead. Uh, he goes, what do you mean a hothead? Like, just look at the way he did that guy, uh, and, and so on, and there's basically just chatting, gossiping and, and, and. Murmuring as things go, and people are making way at the front, uh, at the front of the building, there's this other guard here and he, once again, he's just standing there. Um, he's heard everything, um, but doesn't seem panicked or annoyed. Um, and if anything, the only person that actually gives a second look to is Bo. Uh, because Bo, as far as he's concerned, was interrogating and instigating with his guard colleague. Um, so if there's, if there's any sort of a potential, um, threat to society slash troublemaker amongst everybody. It's, it's this, it's this guy with the.
This helmet looking man, this small, scrawny, yes, that's, yes.
Yeah, this, this, this potential troublemaker, this rabble riser, just, you know.
Is this?
I could never.
Who did you say this is?
This is, see this guard that's standing outside?
Oh, that one, okay.
Yeah, so as you're kind of all walking out the door here.
You mean Bo's next target, that one?
I'm walking, yeah, we're walking out, I'm sort of like, what kind of ass backwards trial proceedings was this thing?
Tommy will, Tommy tries to, as Tuggles is making a way to the door, tries to step right up beside him and, and like walking with him. And it's just like, wow, that was a interesting way for them to handle that kind of situation, huh?
Yeah, I mean, I don't get much of this at all.
Yeah, we, we're kind of energy coming from everybody, Tommy, by the way, and Tommy put, put his hand out.
I'll, uh, kind of look at it for a second and then I'll look at him for a second and then I'm gonna shake his hand, but. Just a little bit too strong, just a little bit.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Well, yeah, you got, got quite a grip on you, um, yeah, so.
Tell me, tell me, what, what you realize as well is although Tuggles has done the slightly harder grip, it's still nowhere near as painful as being fist bumped by. Um, uh, a forest guardian.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, so if anything, you maybe don't react in the way that Tuggles would have thought, because you've been, you actually have perspective, you've been hurt worse. Accidentally during introductions, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, Tommy, Tommy's very much just, you know, introduced himself and it's just like, yeah, interesting how that all, how they kind of handled that stuff, um. We're new, we're kind of new in town and I kind of give like a, a general wave to, to the rest of the, the group not too far away and, uh, so we're still kind of. Getting our, our barons around here as well, but, um, you know, it's not always. You know, as a pirate, it's, it's kind of uncomfortable at times when you become the center of attention, so, you know, if you ever need an extra hand, an extra. Person, you know, now we met. And kind of just le- kind of, kind of just leaves it like that, like, if you need a friend. I'm new in town kind of situation with, with that kind of energy.
Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna give him a, a nod, like a warm nod and then, um. As I assume you kind of step back over to the group.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna kind of stand where I am and like look at them, but not say or do anything, just kind of stand there and like look around.
Yeah, so like, yeah, so like, it, it's not even subtle, it's just, you're just, that, that's the thing you're thinking about and you're just looking right at them, yep.
Yeah, and it's like, when you go to a party and there's like that one kid that's just kind of standing there looking around, not, not like interacting with anybody, that's kind of the vibe that I'm putting off.
And, and Tommy does a thing where he, he comes back over to the group and like, not quite loud enough for, just for the group to hear. Alright, everybody just, uh, just smile and wave, I think I found another person for our crew, and Tommy turns around and gives a very like. Wave, he's not sure if anyone else is gonna wave with him, but, but he, 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 he gives a wave.
Uh, I'm gonna look behind me as if just, you know, this, he's waving at somebody, but can't be me, can't be me.
Nice, okay, cool, who, who waved at, uh, at, at Tuggles?
Claude.
Claude.
Very stoic wave.
Yeah, um, I'm gonna say Tell did, uh, Ryan and Bo, did you?
Uh, I'm still like, I'm kind of like, I don't know, I'm all swords back, but I'm gonna give him another.
And confused, yeah, okay, cool.
Yeah.
Ryan did not.
Yeah, okay.
Ryan's still sparking, um, she's actually gonna charge up to him and start yelling at him. And be like, how could you just stand there and take that abuse, you're, you just let them walk all over you and call you things and you can just. Maybe get the sense that she's not necessarily yelling at him anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, it's more of an internal thing, but at some point she slams her hands to the ground to discharge some of that electricity, so she doesn't hurt anybody.
Yeah, okay.
Tommy quickly like walks up and like kind of puts a hand on her shoulder, like he's, he's like, this might get me, she might actually hurt me, but he puts the hands on her, it's like, ah, it's, it's okay, it's okay. Uh, you know, hey, sorry, uh, Tuggles, we, you know, we all have our own kind of situations and it's kind of like. Trying to pull, pull her slightly away, like, we don't have to, we don't all have to be upset, you know, right now and he's trying to. Tommy's panicking, cause he's like, it just went from a, a nice wave to like, oh fuck, uh, she might, she might hurt somebody.
Yeah. No, Tobin, Tobin got scared by that, so basically the sharp, the sharp sudden expression, uh, the fact that you ran. Uh, away and even when he was beginning to kind of chase towards, then all of a sudden the voice raised up really quickly. And then you kind of shocked the ground, so no, he's not getting shocked by it, uh, but he, he doesn't quite know where the. Uh, where to look at the moment, he's, he's, he's kind of, there's like a little bit of whimper, maybe the tail is in, in a little bit between his legs. At the moment, he, he's, he's almost kind of caught between, like say you ran all over to Tuggles and there was the group standing there, so he ran like half the way.
Ryan will just catch sight of him and release a little bit of the anger. The anger till she realizes, just Tobin's the reason that she can. Come back to herself and see that she's a little out of control.
Yeah, Tobin's reaction to that is probably just that initial like wide eyed looking at you as you're coming across. Um, and as the hand goes down, you can see Kenny bends down a little bit, but he's not like terrified of you, it's just, it's more shock. Um, so he still lets you rub him if you want to rub him on the head or anything. Um, but he's very, he's still very wary because like, you know, like a lot of dogs, they, they hear loud noises and like, am I being shouted at? I don't know, did I do something wrong? Um, uh, you know, so.
Well, the petting is half for him and half for Rain.
Yeah, that's fine. Uh, almost that's slightly too hard of a rub, you know, where their eyes kind of go. Yeah, um, okay, cool. Uh, Tuggles, you got shouted at, uh, by.
I did.
By, by this elegant, uh, air gymnasse, uh, you could see that even when she was trying to shout at you, it was probably more. Like her eye contact was like, uh, at your, like your midriff because you're so much taller than her. Uh, so it almost maybe started at the face and then became sort of looking at your, at your midriff, but it was almost like a thousand mile stare through that. Uh, what Tuggles emotional intelligence is, is up to you in terms of how he deals with that. Um, but what you tell me, because then pretty much even before you could react, she turned around and she petted this dog. Uh, so, uh, and Tommy's, Tommy's kind of left there, Tommy's in front of this guy who came up to you and said, hey, do you want to be part of the crew? And then one of his crew just came up and shouted.
Yeah, uh, about that, sorry, like that's Rain, um, you know, we've all kind of had our own life paths, right? That could, you know, have, we've sailed through this, through this life in different ways, right? And Tommy, Tommy's like, it's like just a, a, like a spill of words coming out because he's just like, eh, eh, so, so anyway. Sorry about that. Um, she, she didn't mean no harm by it. And Tommy's also looking around worried that the guards have noticed this as well and he doesn't want, Tommy doesn't want to deal with guards, so he's just like.
You, yeah, you get, you guys, you guys kind of came out of side door at the thing. Rain and then came from the back door and walked around the corner, so no guards can see you.
Okay.
You don't get the feeling there are a lot of guards anyway, uh, but definitely this commotion. Uh, not only were people looking at Tuggles anyway because he's huge and green. Um, and was the center of attention of this, of this, um, civic motion. Um, you know, which you can't get the feeling that's almost like, uh, the, the way the, the, the mayor would have talked about as opposed to using the word trial. Um, and, but not only is this huge, then this, then this other stranger came up and roared at him. And I think if some of them were going, some of them, you can hear the tongue goes, I wonder if he hurt one of their family as well. Oh my God, this guy's, this guy's a monster. Like, he's, he's out of control, he's out of control, that, that, I wonder, did he do something to her as well? Um, because that's, that's their anchoring bias, you know, he's there because he attacked people, even though he said that he didn't. Um, but clearly these people have injuries. Um, and now someone else is shouting at him.
Well, we're getting Tuggles.
Someone from the back goes, yeah, get out of our town, yeah, get out of your freak. But, but not everyone's gonna get on board with that. Um, you know, as far as they're concerned, this is just fuel for, yeah, that's, I, I could be a bigot because, because yeah, he's a weirdo and strange and he shouldn't be here, not in our town.
Rain's gonna go back to face him and quietly say, uh, I apologize, um, it just, my past, um. Came back to me for a moment in there and then she'll just like give him an awkward pat on the shoulder.
Yeah, uh, Tommy, you're almost gonna have to roll for shock damage just of how shocked you are.
Oh, okay.
Then Rain has actually, Rain actually said sorry to somebody, uh, because she's never said sorry to you. Uh, like this, this is a very, very different, she actually, uh, not only had an outburst, but then. Uh, this is the woman that you know that bullied a, a demigod, uh, minor god. Um, and had no regrets about whatsoever. So she's actually shown. Maybe this is character growth, uh, maybe it's the, the, the reaction to an audience. If anything, that, while you're contemplating that, that causes you just to be silent for a moment, uh, we're going to get Tuggles' reaction.
Yeah, so he, Tuggles has the emotional intelligence of like a doorknob or like a, like an eight year old maybe. He's not, he doesn't do social interactions at all, let alone well. Um, so, so when, when, you know, Tommy came up originally and started talking to him, he was like, okay, this is a little bit weird. And then another person came up and just started yelling at him and then stormed away and he's like, not able to process any of this and he's looking a little bit like. Almost a look of physical pain on his head because like, maybe he is feeling a little bit of physical pain because of all of the things that's happening in his brain right now. Um, but then he kind of glances over and, and sees a little, a little, little pupper sitting on the ground, little dog. And that's the only time that anybody sees his emotion go from either neutral or pain to like. Just a little break of a smile and then I just kind of sit there and stare at it. And like nothing else is there and I'm just like sitting there staring at it smiling like, oh, look at that happy little dog.
Yeah, uh, Tobin is, Tobin is terrified of you because not only are you massive, but Rain, one of the closest people and humans in his life. She just got angry at you, so he's like, he's kind of looking at Rain, he's like, hmm, uh, you know, like, you, if Rain doesn't like him, I don't like him, hmm.
Yeah, the old, the old looking at him like, we don't like this guy, right?
Yeah, we don't like this guy, right, right, right?
Will Tobin to heal? Will he, will he come and heal and?
Yeah, yeah, because as you say, it's, it's not like, it's not like animal handling, uh, for like a strange animal. Um, i- if, if you think Tobin is a good boy, but because, because even, even when he's doing that, like he's, like he's glancing it. He, he's looking, he's, he's a growling in To- Tuggles' direction, doesn't quite know why, not only, but he is massive. But it's more that, hey, she doesn't like you, I don't like you, but I, you know, and he's got that sort of energy to him, he's looking at you and can try and read the situation. Um, so you're saying heal and he's like over beside you. He's just kind of doing a half, yeah, he's, he's like half brave, half, half brave, half scared. So you can see he's kind of wrapped around you and his face is in front of you, but his butt is behind your leg, so it's like part of him is afraid and want to be behind you. But the other part's protective of you and like, hmm. Not, not guaranteed, just sound.
Hand out. Like, i- if you wanna, if you wanna try to at least say hello to him, you can just let him sniff you.
Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
Okay, um. Tuggles, I'm gonna give, ask you to give a han- animal handling check.
Can do.
With, with your sort of experience of things, um, and we'll just kind of see how that goes because this is a unfamiliar animal to you regardless of how much you like them.
So that is a twenty-two total.
Okay, so basically, let, let's say you almost like a very calm, like. I'm gonna say Tuggles' thoughts, e- e- even just in the interaction with Tommy, haven't been particularly clear or thought out, they've been quite staggered. But in this moment, you can see just these years of, of expertise and this almost, uh, natural communicative without words. As this hand comes out, the back of the hand, you know to show the back of your hand towards the dog to let it sniff, you're not just gonna reach out and try to rub him. Let it sniff and then gets more confident with sniffs and, and open up the palm and. Um, and, and he goes at that and, and he lets you, lets you rub him and that's, and that's why he seems to, he seems to relax. Uh, as he gets lost in this rub, because it's a really high quality rub. That you're giving him, but with his animal handle, like a really high quality behind the ears rub. Uh, for a split moment, he, he gets lost in it, but then he stops and he looks at Rain as if like, oh, did I do something bad? Hmm, hmm, are we, we, we're not supposed to like this guy, right? Hmm, hmm.
Rain gives him assurance, like a look of assurance, because she's got a lot of respect just for how Tuggles approached.
Okay, cool, cool. So that, that seems to have sort of at least alleviated that, uh, Tuggles, if anything, you've probably at least been able to forget. Yes, it's a pretty weird and, uh, unique introduction, uh, to Rain. Um, but, uh, Tobin's on board, um, and you've, you've made that connection. You saw a couple of when you were walking over, the other people in crowd took a couple of steps back, the woo. Uh, away from you, your group didn't, um, but then just kind of, uh, laid, you know, kind of put the hand out. And now there's a smattering, like, say like a quarter of the people are there like, oh, the dog is lovely. Um, half of the people are confused and the other half are like, yeah, well, you should, you still, you might be nice to animals, what about the. What about our, our, our friends and our family or whatever, we're all still in danger because of you. You, you're never gonna really win them over. They've, they've kind of marked your card from what they believe. You have, that, that's just more for the people who are sort of perceptive of things, but, uh, Tuggles is in the moment, he's given this doggo. Uh, uh, a really high quality rub.
Bo's gonna say, well, that settles it, guys. I think, uh, we got, that's Tobin and Rain's approval. Let's say he's welcome.
Yeah. Okay, um, so with that there, basically, we're, we're gonna let, just as this is happening, this sort of happening over the space of like sort of ten, fifteen minutes. And people are dispersing and going in the different directions. Um, some of them are going into shops, some of them are going to houses, some of them are going out to different areas of work. Uh, very few people seem to be going towards the, the port area, couple of them into the, the soggy biscuit. Uh, we're gonna say it's about ten thirty, eleven by the time this, this civic meeting and these following interactions have happened. Um, so what do you guys sort of want to do or, or figure out your sort of next steps? Um, and Tuggles, you're still sort of waiting around. I, I know it's a D and D game, but you don't have to be just all about, I'm part of the party now, you, but you can, yeah.
Yeah, I'm kind of just following them wherever, my, my, my thing is I'm gonna kind of just tag along because like. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of just hanging out with the dog and like. You know, I've got my little pouch, I, I keep like, uh, you know, random woods meat and stuff on me, I like toss a little chunk of meat every now and then. Yeah, I'm trying to get good with the dog more than I'm trying to get good with any other people, I'm, he's going with them, so I'm going with them.
Yeah, 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 okay, fantastic. Um, Tobin is scoffing away at the food. Uh, but every time you see him like kind of look at you happy, he'll take another wee look at Rain and go back beside her. Okay, uh, right, at that point, you can, you can see people at the, shops are going by and the, and the city hall is still there, that those doors are still open. Uh, shops are nearby, uh, it's still very foggy and, um, people are kind of mingling as they go along. Um, what does anybody sort of want to do at the moment?
Kind of wanted to check out that lighthouse still.
Yeah.
Missing lighthouse keeper, I feel like with fog in the area, it's kind of an important feature of the town.
Tommy, do you have a set of thieves tools or like what are the, uh, to like pick locks, lockpicking set?
Uh, yeah, pretty, pretty certain, pretty certain you do as a rogue, yeah.
I do, yes.
Okay, I was gonna say that was the only reason I was gonna stop in and at the gear, at the, uh, Blade and Barrels store, I don't know.
Yeah, Tommy kind of.
I feel like we need to get, I feel like we need to step out of town or at least just step away from the crowds and kind of like get to somewhere, uh, a little less.
Uh, yeah. Okay, nothing, um, uh, so as you're sort of walking along, uh, Tuggles at your. At your feet, um, basically some leaves and seaweed and all blow by, uh, and a bit of litter. Uh, goes past your feet as well.
Oh, you know, I'm scooping it up, Disney style where I kind of don't bend over, but I do a, a deep step and scoop it up as we walk past.
Okay, cool. As you do that and you, do you want to take a look at it or are you just crumpling up in your hand?
Um, yeah, I'll take like a not super intent, but like I, I want to see what was, what was so good that it could grace my forest ground, you know?
Yeah, yeah, okay, cool. Um, basically, it's, it's something that you, you kind of see and you almost kind of sigh as you look at it. Because like, oh, seeing this, it's just, it's just the weekly gossip rubbish. As far as you're concerned, you, you, you know, you can care about or not care about, but it's, this one, this one's on the ground.
Yeah, I super don't care about it. It's like, uh, it's like, uh, I, I don't like. Society and this is like the bottomist part of it. This is like, this is what, this is what you're doing, gossip, ugh, smile.
Okay, cool, okay. So right before you sort of crumple it up and throw it into the, into the bin. Uh, do you say to everybody what this piece of paper is?
Yeah, I'll make a, kind of just like that, like a passing note, like, uh, this, this is what these people do with their time.
Yeah.
You know, type of comment.
Okay, cool.
Ask a hit point, so what, what do you got there? Let me see it.
Uh, incoherent ramblings of nonsense and I'll, I'll kind of, you know, toss it over to him.
Okay, cool.
I don't know for a fact if I can like read good.
Nice, okay. Yeah, you, you just know that this, this, sorry, um, go, I'll just finish this, just because Tuggles being in sort of there, Tuggles. Unfortunately, in the time you've kind of been in and around the area, you've seen different versions of this over the weeks, there seems to be. You might not, you might not read good, uh, but you know that they do look slightly different when you've seen it, so it's not the one version, maybe, you know.
Yeah, I read a little, I could glean the, the gist of what's there.
Yeah, and you get the feeling that these things change, let's say, week to week, you know, um, as, as it goes along. Um, and, um, as you say, go along, and even somebody walking along sees Bo looking and goes, I don't read that trouble. The, the, the person who prints it doesn't even put their name on it, you know, just, ooh, clandestine, you know, any joker can write this rubbish. And then someone else goes, no, 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 but do you remember the one time when they uncovered the, the thing under the shop? Because that was that thing under the shop, the, the, those two discussed the validity of anything that's on this rag. Um, that's, that's going along, so. Yeah. So can you read them, okay, or do you want me to read some of them out? I just know the share screen, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I can read, yeah.
You can read, okay, cool, that's fine, okay, cool. Uh, right, so you're walking along, um, Tuggles, have the party given you any idea of where they're going or have you just walked with them because Tobin's going there?
Um, definitely, definitely just I'm blindly following them because, uh, I, I found the only thing that's a little bit comforting to me, so I'm gonna tag along with it, you know?
Okay, um, at that moment, um, a, a rotten tomato lands at your foot. Just lands on your foot and, um, I don't know what you think, do, this, is it raining tomatoes? Um, is, is it whatever, you, you, you can.
I'm definitely gonna look up, I'm not gonna rule that out, so I'm gonna look up.
Yeah, uh, and as, as you look up, basically, um, another one comes in, uh, misses you on the other side. Um, and then one of them, uh, yeah, one of them, if there was such a thing as a critical hit with a tomato. Gets you right, gets you, gets you right on the knee, okay, because just your mats feel like it. It probably would have been almost closer to other people's like sort of mid thigh level of where your, where your knee is. Um, guys, the, the, the sheer height difference with Tuggles being here is that if the sun was shining, you'd probably all be in his shadow. Right, um, from, from the angle, okay, so, um, because I don't think anyone in the group is particularly tall.
The hobbits are going to Isengard, the hobbits are going to Isengard.
I'm just five ten.
I'm, yeah.
I'm six foot and he's still a foot and a half taller.
Other than Tell, I think Bo is the shortest person, I think I'm like five seven, five eight.
Yeah, yeah, um, and, and, and Tell, Tell's, uh, you're, uh, half.
Elf, elf, but he's half elf.
Oh, sorry, um, yeah, so anyway, i- it's more of this idea, yeah, so it's like still like between six foot and seven five. Big old thing and as you can imagine, he's not a string bean, you know, so he's, he's begging both dimensions, okay? Uh, and this thing kneels him on the knee, but it's just a rotten tomato, just smushes, okay? Uh, Tuggles, uh, when you're looking up, you can basically see, uh, it, it's, it's a group of women. Who are throwing this and you get the feeling that they are like the husbands and sisters of the, of the, of the affected parties or at least the people who are blaming you for being hurt.
Right.
Um, but as, as you look up at them, they get scared and they run away, you know, and, and they do that overly, you're like, ah! Scream, you know, even though all you did was actually look at them, okay? Um, so that causes a little bit of ruckus, but you've got a couple of tomatoes at your feet, uh, one of them's hit your knee and, uh, yeah.
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of smear it off, maybe lick my fingers to. Yeah, I'll uh I'll kind of smear it off, maybe lick my fingers to clean them, you know?
Yeah, okay. Um, does it remind you of just one thing that it'll remind you of anything you've sort of tasted in the past or? Um, you know, anything, yeah.
Not like, uh, hey, this reminds me of that, but that like that little tickle that you get in the back where it's like, hey, I know that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, cool. Um, does anybody in the party as you're going along? You've you've obviously very kindly accepted Tuggles into his group. Um, but as far as you know, you have no idea if he actually did what he did or did not do what he did. Um, so you could have adopted a serial killer, um, who just has a brilliant legal defense in a in a in a weak uh justice state. Um, is anybody concerned um that this town, or at least there seems to be a real thing of this dangerous individual?
Brian automatically thinks he's innocent because he was being persecuted for.
Right.
His race.
Hmm, and and just, yeah, I mean, Bo, whether it didn't seem fair as to how he was being treated. So in the way that he saw how he interacted with
Yeah.
Tobin so gently and like genuinely, just.
Yeah.
It didn't seem like he would do.
Yeah, because because as we know, all evil people hate dogs, right? That's 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 how you can see them right off the bat. Um, okay, cool. So uh, good thing that Tuggles is the big bad evil guy and he's gonna kill you all in your sleep. Uh, winners, yeah.
Claude appreciates how composed he was, but he's gonna, he's gonna use divine sense to see if he detects any evilness.
Classic.
Divine sense. Can you describe design divine sense again for me, please?
As an action, you can detect good and evil. Until the end of your next turn, you can sense anything affected by the hallow spell or know the location of any celestial fiend or unfiend or undead within sixty feet that is not behind total cover.
Okay, cool. Um, just, I was kind of looking up this a little bit. It's not exactly as 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 simple as a is this person good or evil type thing. It's more, it it's kind of more of a like is the creature itself like an evil race, just so you know.
Right, but he's not a fiend in disguise. He is what he appears to be.
Correct. Yeah, that that's a hundred percent. None of those things trigger. Um, uh, so yeah, nothing like that sort of sounds like. I I just want to say that because I know even just from a story point of view, yeah, it was funny going into the shop. And those guys were clearly evil, the doppelgangers. Um, but uh, yeah, so that's okay. So just so you know, in terms of the answer that I would give, especially for a playable character, uh, the answer it's actually question is that he's not a fiend undead or whatever.
Right.
Okay.
Tom, Tommy's completely fine with him because as you can imagine, pirate ships don't have background checks. So so there's been, it's not like, it's not like Tommy's gonna question adding somebody to to hit the ship, so.
Okay, cool.
Unless he makes a move, move on me, I'm I'm fine with him.
But I figured, I mean, if we were walking away, we were gonna have some type of conversation or try to with the individual with him.
Cool. That's the only reason I sort of brought that up is just as a DM. It's like, I just wanted to be like, okay, before I sort of set up or move on to next things. I want to give you get those opportunities as you're walking along, uh, but I believe you said you're walking in the general direction of the lighthouse. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's that's where we were gonna kind of head.
Okay, so um, Tuggles, you 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 know about the lighthouse. You you have a decent understanding of the area. You know, it's about five hundred meters from where you are, uh, so might be an opportunity. Uh, you're either just happy enough to keep going along with this group or if you want to try to engage in conversation. Um, as they're walking in that way, you know, there's kind of some windy paths and there's lots of sort of dunes and awkward hills there. So um, you know the best walking path towards the lighthouse. So if anything, you sort of slightly get to the front uh, or at least near the front to be able to go, oh, no, actually, you go down this street or you 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 go up here and et cetera. Okay?
Yeah, I'll uh gladly try to strike up a little bit of conversation here. I'll kind of just,
Mm hmm.
you know, in passing to the group in general, be like, so what's um, what's the deal with you guys? You like, uh, are you are you guys related or, you know, I don't, uh, they could look fully, completely different. And I'm like, so you guys are like brothers and sisters or what? Like, what's the?
Yeah.
Know each other? What's, what do you, what do you do?
Because they don't look like you. Okay, cool.
All us humanoids look alike.
Uh, okay, so um, did Bo say that I lied?
Uh, yeah, he did, but with like a joking tone, but I guess he still didn't get it.
Are you calling a humanoid?
Yeah, Tuggles, do you get the joke?
No, I'm gonna laugh, but I don't get it.
Okay.
I'm gonna laugh because I see that he laughed and I'm gonna be like.
Okay, cool, cool.
Um, I'm gonna be like, so you guys are, you guys are one, one of those adventuring parties? Is that what's the?
Oh.
You know, I've always, I've traveled a lot and I've I've heard a lot about them, different cities I've been to. I've always wanted to join one. I I heard, I mean, it's crazy, just not too long ago, I was in some bar in some tavern and I was hearing about this magnificent glorious battle. Oh, it sounded just amazing. I would have loved to have been there and crushed some skulls. I I culminated, I mean, a man of legend now, you you you've all heard that this dude, this giant ship sailed across the stars and smashed into the, it was an explosion. I mean, everybody knows Terry the Magnificent's name has traveled the Sword Coast. It's all the way from from Daggerford, man. They saved the whole city.
Terry, yeah.
Terry?
Tyler, Tyler.
Oh, uh. Do you uh, do you remember the name of the ship?
No.
Sails, this man of legend?
No, not even an inkling.
I don't think we've ever heard of somebody this.
It was all, the focus was all just on uh, Trevor.
We came from Daggerford.
You you must have known him then. Oh, the the pirate of legends. You must have heard about this guy.
Maybe we can ask Tommy about this. This sounds like something he knows.
Someone walking past goes, you know, gets briefly gets caught up in the moment. He's go, yeah, that, okay, I don't know, but I think it was um, I think it was Todd. Um, and and like it, the the story comes from, and seemingly he did it all on his own, or at least that's what I heard. Uh, I I I heard he's like the only man that could, you know, have a crew with no other people on it. Uh, it's just, uh, crazy and he just, he just sort of walks past. It's, yeah, Todd, it was that, it was definitely Todd, yeah.
Tommy, do you know of a one man pirate crew?
Sounds amazing. Sounds like someone that really can handle themselves. Yeah.
Sailed the ship through the stars and crashed into the to the monster.
Yeah, uh, something of legends. Tommy, Tommy wants someone else to recognize it before he does it. Because it doesn't feel as good if you have to explain it that you're the person. So hearing everybody else messes messes name up too, it's just like Tommy, that was like, yeah, it sounds like, sounds like a great captain, someone that could really handle tough situations and should be almost cherished everywhere. He goes, someone really awesome. He's kind of just like.
Someone the sloppy sailor looks up to?
Yeah. And then and then this, and then this, this other kid, because kids, yeah, they're stage, you know, they don't have a good, yeah, but you, you know, um, I was at school, right? And and I I I said something to my friend and the teacher said, no, don't do that. You don't want to be like the god bully. You know, you don't want to be, you don't want to be like them. Uh, they're really, really mean. Um, and really not, 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 not a nice thing to be. So I I'm sorry, those people were mean to you at the at the city hall, mister.
Why wouldn't you want to bully a god, little boy?
And she looks, he looks up at you just like, um, I'm sorry.
End up for yourself.
It's just really scary because like you're you you're you're, which is weird because it looked up the toe Tuggles and big and green and you're 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 big and blue, not as big. Um, and just this, she's just like, kind of just, you're just looking at you wide, wide mouth, just scared, doesn't know what to do. Um, because but the teacher said, said so. Um.
Your teacher sounds like a useless, that's the sloppy sailor.
Um, okay, um.
Yeah, don't always.
Can I tell her I was talking to you on Monday?
As long as you uh don't uh let her tear you down about anything.
Yeah.
Stop for yourself. Bullies are fine if you're sticking up for yourself.
Yeah, bullying is good. Okay, yeah, start skipping away. My teacher is useless. My teacher is useless.
You're good with kids, Ryan.
This is the kind of stuff you can expect when you uh you tag along with us. There's a lot of, a lot of miscommunications that get passed on.
Communication, that's gonna be real life for this kid.
Sounds like he's gonna, he's gonna make it far.
As long as he doesn't let people walk all over him.
So Tuggles, what's your deal? I see you uh picking up all that that garbage. Uh, what are you gonna do with all that stuff?
Oh, throw it out or use it if I can use it. I mean, I just can't stand to see the way that, you know, the people of these cities just treat our, they they treat our home like it's trash, you know? They come in and they plow it over and erect these towers and you know, it's 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 not natural and I don't like it. So I'm trying to, you know, I try to do my part when I can.
Where do you, where do you hail from then, sir?
Um, nowhere, I guess.
Far from nowhere.
I'm I'm a bit of an outlander myself. I I stick to the wilds.
Oh.
Another little kid runs along and just this kid um comes and has a teddy bear. Um, that's just right in front of Tuggles. Have you seen my, you seen my brother?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be like, uh, to look at it with, I don't know, not like I'm gonna help you, but I want to crouch down and like, I'm still, you know, looming over this kid in a squatted position. And I'm gonna get real close and I'm gonna pat it on the head and be like, run along, you don't want to get hurt, you know, playing out here and shove him to the side. I don't want to get out of here.
You shove, you shove the kid. Okay, um, the kid gets shoved to the ground.
Not to, not like, not like to the ground, but like to the like, you know, hand behind the back and kind of scoop him along, be like, run along now, run along.
Oh, yeah, oh, like push the, I just.
Yeah, no, I'm not like shoving the kid to the ground, like.
Sorry, I just, I thought, I thought you, I thought you wanted to shove the kid since you said I shoved the kid, you know?
No, like a little, a little, you know, kick on the caboose and be like, get running.
Okay, right, okay. That's still enough to even catch it. Whoa, lurks and forth and tight, you know, holds on really tight uh to that teddy bear. Um, uh, uh, as it goes along and runs after the kid and um, uh, there's a little bit of a, ah, there's a scream, nothing, nothing tragic. Just just scared because it was a bigger push, no thought. Uh, sorry, uh, and then uh, Bo.
What, what? Oh my. I wasn't gonna say that.
Oh, sorry, you were just talking and then just got interrupted by the kid, so.
Uh, yeah, I forget what I, I'm just taken back by the little shove that he gave that kid. It's like, hey, you got some strength on you, buddy, huh?
I don't, I I'm not used to dealing with such frail beings, I guess. I don't. I don't know. Back, back home, it was, it was, uh, you know, you can give it and you can take it. It was a rough life growing up.
Tuggles, you say.
I mean, you seem to know your way around Tobin. He's a pretty, he's about the same size as that kid.
Yeah, yeah, but I don't know, it's always, it's, I I feel like I can say more when there's no words involved, you know? And when it comes to dealing with animals, it's just, it's, it works. I don't know.
Well, let me just, let me ask you something. How's uh, just be frank, what's your opinion, opinion of, you know, humans?
Hum, humans. I have no love for humans. I have no hate for humans, but I have no love for them.
Well, as long as you don't have hate, that's fine. I'd be me being the only human in the full human.
I'm human. I'm a variant human.
Yeah.
So as I, as I hear this, I hold up my hand to shake.
Wait, I thought I had a character. I thought Claude was half something.
No.
No?
I'm a.
Oh, okay.
Human variant.
I don't know.
Oh, awesome.
Half badass.
Yeah.
I was one of the only humans.
Bo, that, that's just because you don't see race and that's okay. That's 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 a lot about.
As he's asking specifically about race.
Are you racist? Because I'm not racist, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not.
I I finally introduced myself.
Yeah.
Claude Marcel Brightward. I hold up my hand.
I'm gonna shake it and I'm gonna say Tuggles, the slaughterer.
The slo- I didn't know there was a title involved.
All right, we probably should ask more questions.
Do you have any other titles we should be aware of?
Uh, no.
Quite impressive. And how did you earn that name, if I might ask?
Tuggles, the adventurer killer.
Yeah.
The night stammer.
The party killer.
Investigation check on Tuggles to see what kind of like, you know, weapons he has on him and gear.
Uh, yeah.
Give him, I never gave him a full look up and down.
Yeah, yeah, he's not, he's not, there isn't really a feel on this one because A, he's not hostile, so he's not trying to hide it from you. Uh, B, his sort of style, as you want to call it that, is not like cloaked dagger. There's nothing sort of hidden about it. Uh, Tuggles, um, what can Bo see on you?
Yeah, so I wear no armor. I wear like the the, there are children around kind of clothes, you know, like tiny little, you know, shorts, shoes, the basics. So that I, that's so that I can get service if I go into a tavern. No armor.
Not know where you were gonna go when you said tiny, by the way, you know, children around, so I wear tiny.
No, no, I mean, like a fur, not like a loin cloth, but like, you know, the like basic fur, furs and stuff. Leather, you know, like a little shoulder pauldrons, but not anything that's armor by any means.
Yeah.
Um, what about them, uh, that weapon?
Yeah, so you see, you see on my back, um, there are two main weapons, uh, holster on my back, a battle axe and a morning star. Um, that's it? I I mean, I have a hand axe on my belt. I have a battle axe and a morning star and a hand axe on my belt. Uh, and then that's it in terms of main things. I don't.
How well worn are these uh, these weapons of his?
Pretty, they've seen their, they've seen their use, yeah.
Is there dried blood on them? Are they clean?
No, they're not clean, but not because like, not in the sense that like I do a lot of murders, but in the sense that like I don't clean them after I do a murder, if I do a murder type thing.
You, you, you.
They're just just. How many is many?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, you you can see from as a, as an instrument, like as as an item, they are well maintained. Uh, but cleanliness is not the, is 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 not part of the checklist when it comes to something being ready. Uh, so you you can tell, you can tell it's sharp, um, you can tell, you can tell that they've been worn. Um, and 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 things out there and, you know, he's got, he's kind of got like, sort of like a necklace or he's got like little things on his, on his belt and stuff. Um, he hasn't really drawn attention to any of them. You're just sort of taking it all in, all seven, five of this. Uh, and noticing the battle axe and the and the and the morning star. And the idea that what he calls a hand axe, you just call an axe. Right? So it's a hand axe to him. Uh, but it is, it is an axe and 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 for mechanic purposes, it's a hand axe, but just to give the perspective, it's not like, like, that would be like me throwing a toothpick at somebody. Um, you know, as 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 a deadly weapon, okay?
Yeah, I got you. Wow. So no wonder those folks who are scared of you with a title like that.
I uh, trust me, I only, I'll kind of like, you know, do the the pat the holster kind of thing. I'll be like, you know, they only get used when they need to. I don't.
Yeah.
I don't uh, just don't make me need to.
So you 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 also got the feeling, you also got the feeling that, just to kind of think back, you also got the feeling that if if a lot of people knew the slaughterer title, you know, they would have taken the opportunity to shout it out when they were trying to prove his guilt in the, in the thing. So they know his name. Uh, it's and and it's not like this guy has a PR company. Uh, it's 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 almost, it's 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 a title for himself. So you know, like if if people were trying to dig up dirt in this guy to get him guilty, they definitely would have went, hell, his name is the slaughterer. So you you, you you kind of think back to that in terms of, does everybody know, think he's the slaughterer?
Good perspective, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, yeah, so uh, you might want to keep that title to uh, to just us and maybe to yourself if you were uh in trouble. Uh, did you? Uh, did you, did you actually, did you attack those timbers or did they uh, they attack you?
I don't, dude, I mean, it was, it was like I said, I mean, they, there was a bit of an altercation. There was some, you know, chest poking and shoving, but. I don't, I don't remember fighting them at all. I, they were there and then they were gone, the next thing I know, so I don't. I didn't hurt no people, that's all I know.
Do you normally have uh, some uh, loss of memory during confrontations?
Not always. I mean, I'm usually fairly competent in a battle, but. Sometimes it's weird. I can't think of what might, what, what, what might happen, but sometimes I just don't have any memories of what happens. It's almost like a, a fuzzy, like I've had too much grog, too much ale.
Yeah, it's, to, to get, kinda give that as well, it's more like exhaustion, you know, when you're just so bloody tired. Um, you, you, your, your head's not even thinking clearly, so it's not necessarily, um. Even sort of memory loss or, or, or full on blackouts, um, you know, he just gets on with it and, you know, like, um. So, just even that, Tuggles, Tuggles, you, you kinda get the feeling that people are sort of listening to this and going, this really doesn't make sense. Um, if you were to sort of try to defend yourself, what, you said you got into a fight, what did you fight uh, in that, that you can recall?
I mean, I remember fighting those creatures. They were, they were men made of wood and, wood and vine. And it was, it's all very, I have glimpses of it, very fuzzy glimpses, but. They weren't, they, they weren't, they weren't people. They weren't like men, like, you know? Normal, normal world creatures like us.
Yeah, it sounds like this is at the, the lumber mill or.
More, more just like a site, like a particular part, just outside of the town where there was, they decided they were cutting down trees there this time.
Well, it sounds like you're not allowed back there, so I don't know if we could go try to find those creatures again if you, but. Maybe after we uh, head out to the White House, we can uh, go see the mayor and maybe get permission to go. Uh, get you some proof that you didn't do it.
I wouldn't mind proof, but um, if we're just gonna go looking, looking for a fight, for a fight sake, I don't. I, I don't, I don't justify in terms of going to find them to, to slaughter them for vengeance, you know, I don't. I'll, I'll, I'll use my might when it's needed, right? But I don't. I'm a little bit uneasy when he mentioned like, oh, we'll go back and finish the job on him kinda deal.
Oh, no, we're not talking about doing the killing, I'm just saying that. Justice, it takes, we, justice for individuals such as yourselves needs to be proven. And it's just, uh, wha- whether that means finding them.
Tobin start, Tobin at the front of this starts to kinda growl a little, where he's starting to get a little bit agitated. You can see kinda the tail is a little bit tight and he's basically, you're looking, you're making your way towards the lighthouse, you've been kinda walking and talking. This sort of whole time and you can kinda get to an alleyway, um, and there looks to be like a. There, there's some rocks and stuff, but there's a bit of a mound and there's a, a bit of cloth fluttering in the air. Um, and you can see that as you kinda get closer, there's a silhouette, there's a, there's a, a large sort of figure. Um, it's, it's got a cloak, um, you can tell it's got the hood of a cape, but the cape is not on it, so it's, it, it's back. Um, and this looks like a pretty large sort of rock as you're coming towards. So you're still about maybe say a hundred yards short of that, um, as you're sort of making your way towards that. And you start hearing just little sounds like. Just from that distance.
You called it a pretty large what?
It looks like a pretty large rock.
A rock.
It looks like a, there, there's, there's rocks nearby, but this is a pretty large rock that looks like it there. Uh, and, and it looks like a, a rock that has like, almost like a piece of material on the back of it. Uh, and you can see that it's sort of, you know, because it's a, a hood, you can see the, the hood is up here and the, the cape is. Or the tail of the, the cape is back there.
Uh, Bo's gonna look down back at the uh, the flyer that Tuggles gave him and read, read it off that uh. Oh, that, that must be the, the cloak.
Hmm.
Look right here, they found the, they found his cloak matching the, the keeper's on the cliffs. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to appro- I'm gonna approach the cloak.
Okay.
Or I'm gonna approach the, the, yeah, the cloak that is there.
As you can see, I, as you can see, there's, there's a little more definition coming on to this. As you're coming up to the base of this, and obviously there's no cloak on that image there, um. You, it, in a weird way, you haven't seen anything quite as big since Tuggles. Um, uh, but even, even this is not as big as Tuggles. Um, and you can just see a, an individual, a, a large thick head. Uh, looking out to the water, um, and there's, there's, you can see at the front. Uh, and you can see its arms moving and you can see every so often it moves its head down and go. Uh, just as you're getting closer and closer to it, it doesn't seem to be paying any attention to you whatsoever.
Is it music? I can't tell if this is music.
Yep, you can ta- you can tell it's, it's music because you're at the coast and there's a lot of wind here. So it's trying to hear like music out over the wind and, and the ocean crashing and things. So you're starting to hear music, it's not song, uh, it's not singing, it's music.
Mm-hmm. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull out my lute. And I'm gonna try to match the, the, the tune that I'm hearing, or like play it, riff off of it.
Yeah.
This is the first time I heard any music while, since we got here and I'm down.
Yeah, uh, thi- this whole area just right here is basically just water. It's like, there's, there's kinda water raised, I know it's, it's a little bit higher towards the. Towards the lighthouse itself, um, this individual is like on a rock near the beach, you can see he's looking out to the water. Um, and the, the tide is coming in a little bit, um, towards his feet, but he's not in the water.
Yeah.
Right? Yeah.
Cool. Some performance, that's a just straight ten.
Okay. You, you match it, um, but you're not getting the attention of it. You're trying to wander maybe because the wind is blowing into your face, maybe like the sound is being taken away from you and not going in the direction. Uh, of this individual, um, and so you, you keep sort of continuing forward.
Okay, so it didn't get his, their attention? Can I, and I can tell that it's a large creature, bigger than Tuggles.
No, uh, it's, it's.
It's a big creature, not as big as.
It, 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 yeah, it's, it's, it's a big creature, um, and let's say six, seven, six eight.
Alright, I didn't get its attention, someone said, you guys, you guys see that thing? You know what that is? Tuggles?
Yeah, Tuggles, are you familiar with that?
Um, am I familiar with that? No, no, I am not familiar with that.
Well, I tried, tried to get his attention, I, I don't know. Anybody else wanna track? Anybody else, you think we should just go up and say hi?
Are we, are we like within like call out distance, like?
Yeah, let, let's say you're walking, cause I think, I think you could always shout, you, you've got a lot of wind and stuff in your face, so that, that's just like the music, you know? Yeah, so with Bo getting the ten, maybe he's convinced himself that either the person's not reacting, either they heard and didn't react. Or he just knows if they didn't hear, so, you know, it's just his perception of that, so.
So that Tommy would be like, are you the keeper of the lighthouse? Just kinda calls out to see if it reacts at all.
No, I am not Koloric.
Have, have you seen him?
Not in a while.
May we approach the lighthouse.
Feel free, friends.
Answer my riddle three. Alright.
Okay, so basically, as, as you come, so are you, are you gonna walk towards?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
We'll approach.
Okay. Um, so as I said, you're at sort of a, a beach area. And you see a portal, okay? Um, this, this is a, a humanoid creature, you know that it speaks, um, but it's, it's obviously a, a turtle. And it's looking out over the water, um, it's got a banjo. Uh, it looks like it's like got like a, like a, a pipe or a, almost like a, a bassoon or something. You know, at the back of its shell and a little harmonica. Uh, Bo, now that you sort of see this detail, the sound you were hearing was the harmonica.
Hmm.
In the wind, yeah, yeah. And every so often as you're talking, like the wind itself catches the harmonicas, you see here a little bit. You know, as it goes along, um, and we'll kinda lead into, lead into that, this will be sort of a natural sort of end. As you are making your way towards the lighthouse and you come across this, so let's go for, let's say, ten minutes or so. I will sort of call it that, uh, if you wanna make introductions or you just wanna make your way towards the lighthouse. Um, but this is who you're approaching, um, on the way to the lighthouse. Uh, and you can also see as well, um, he has, he, he's got a cape on, you can see it now, it's wrapped like a scarf. But he has kind of a cape on those, on his back, so, um, is what he's wearing as well.
Tommy, Tommy, good, good.
I was just gonna say, uh, Bo, now that we're getting close and I can uh, hear the harmonica and see the. See that he's playing a banjo, uh, he's gonna get excited. Uh, like, oh, you look like quite the one man band.
I, that's what I am.
What's your name? My name's Bo, Bodak.
Well met, Bodak. I am Porter.
What are you doing here, Porter? Just practicing?
I used to visit a friend here. Now I sit alone.
Were you friends with Koloric?
I, Alric, Alric Hollow. We, we used to listen to the song of the sea. And he was a good man who kept to himself. And let's just say, we were good at being alone together.
It sounds uh, sounds very sweet, uh.
Well, it sounds. Was, he was a friend, he hasn't been here for a while, unfortunately.
Yeah, rumor has it, uh, that he's, he's gone. No one really knows, they've only found tatters of his, of his garments.
Uh, I believe he was becoming more agitated. In, over the last few months. And I wonder if it was more a sickness of the mind. Than a sickness of the body.
Do you think it had anything to do with what everyone's calling the jinx?
Don't know much about a jinx. I've seen things come and go. Over a long time, this is a, this is a, an old, an old body. Seen a lot, I've seen this town grow from a wetland. To a little village, what it is today. And as, as he's doing that, basically the, the tide is coming in a little bit and anytime sort of the, you see the water kinda go up to his feet. Uh, is probably the only time you actually see him move, so he takes a step away from the water. Um, uh, he doesn't really let interrupt, he's like, he'll get slightly distracted a little bit. But it's not, nothing about this guy's sort of sudden movements. Um, and he just steps away and he goes, but it seemed to be. I would like to find him one day. I just wish I could help my friend.
So you truly believe he's still alive?
I don't believe anything. I hope that he is, he was but a young man. Well, compared to me. Um, but a lot of you humans are young compared to I.
Our lives are very fleeting, comparison to some. Do you uh, how long, how long did you know him?
Uh, I knew he had a troubled life, but he, he came to the lighthouse. Say, oh, not that long ago, maybe twenty-five years ago. Um, but.
As a twenty-five year old?
Yeah, yeah. But time, time fly, time flies by, you know? Um, and he had. He had his own issues, he had his own past, we didn't talk a lot, we kept, kept to ourselves. I have my stories and he has his stories.
Do you know why he left the, the lighthouse the way he did?
Nay, nay, I do not.
What was the last thing he said to you? Like, what was your last conversation like? It sounds like he, I know you said he was very agitated, but.
He never said much, um. And you can see he's trying to think back, cause you know, um, it wasn't too long ago, it's only. Hmm, s- six weeks ago, you, you get the feeling when he's saying six weeks, it's like, you know? Almost like the way, al- almost like the way we talked about kinda yesterday or last week. Um, and, but, he just, he was looking his human age. Um, and talking, uh, and he had theories about the fog. But he didn't divulge a lot to me. He liked to keep his, his silence and I like to keep, to keep mine.
Yeah, well, you truly wouldn't mind if you went then.
No, if, if anything, you're almost getting that feeling, you know, like when two old men are friends and they don't really do, do a lot of talking?
Yeah.
That's the sort of impression, you know, it's, it's not even like a, a hesitant or a, a hiding as far as you can tell.
Yeah, they just like to hang out in silence.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the, like you said, the being alone together type thing. Um, and another wave crashes up towards his feet and he takes another step back from that. Um, and he says. It's not my lighthouse, just, you know, take care. Um, if not mine to deny you entry or not.
I appreciate the uh, candor.
Yeah.
I'll step up to him and introduce myself, but also ask him his name, cause I don't think we ever got his name, right?
Porter, the porter, he did say.
Porter, he did, sorry, I missed that.
That's it.
Um, uh, seeing as you've been here so long, the, the fog, we've been led to believe isn't. A natural occurrence around these parts, it's. Uh, are you, do you, have you ever seen anything like this before?
Don't like to think of it. But it is reminiscent of a time. A. Unsettling time. But it could just be the weather, it's only been here for. Four, three, four months. Once again, you're getting this in per- perception that three, four months is not actually that long for him, um, so that's why he's saying that. Um, but.
So you've seen something like it before?
It's more the mood, the, something. Something has changed, um, in these last. Less than half a year. Maybe, yeah, it's just, but I would prefer not to think of those days. He, he's gonna look at Tuggles and go.
well met, sir. Um, I hope you don't mind me intervening in your business earlier on with the mayor.
Oh, not at all, not at all. Um, thank you actually for, I guess, standing up for me. I guess that's what you did, even maybe indirectly, but thank you. You deserve my thanks nonetheless, good friend.
I just, I just provided information.
I'm gonna kind of pat him on the shell and be like, we'll look for, look for Koloric.
But, but what you did to those men is you're very lucky it was not worse.
I'm gonna have a visible look of surprise when he says what I did to those men, just because it's like I, you know, as far as I know, man, I'll be like, oh, oof.
Yeah. Yep.
I'm gonna, yeah, I'll look a little bit somber and I'll be like, you know, just without saying anything, have that knowing expression. Um, and I'll, you know, I'll be like, again, thank you. Um, you know, we'll, we'll hold true to your hopes and I'm gonna, I'm gonna do my best to find all Koloric. Well, we'll see if we could shed any light on this.
Okay. Um, okay. And everybody roll a wisdom saving throw.
Oh boy. The sea, she's a mystic.
Is an 11 for Tuggles.
Mm-hmm.
Seventeen for Claude.
Thirteen for Bo.
Mm-hmm.
Fifteen for Ryan.
Thirteen per champ.
Twelve, Tommy.
Tommy.
Damn.
I'm sorry. Who got, sorry, who got, so there was an 11 on a 12? Yeah?
Yeah.
Tuggles and Tom. Yeah, but Tuggles, Tuggles and Tommy. You look out to sea. And before we leave today.
Oh. A boy, a boy, there's a boy in the water.
Uh, you see a distressed young woman in the water, uh, trying desperately to capture her attention. Um, and begging for your help. Tuggles and Tommy are the ones compelled to wade out into the water and save her.
Yeah, Tommy drops his coat and jumps in.
Okay. Tuggles, you've making your way in there as well?
Oh yeah. Oh yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm about ankle deep now. I've taken maybe 15 steps in.
Excellent, because as we start our next session, we're going to be going straight into initiative order as Tommy feels something grabbed the bottom of his leg and Tuggle is enveloped by a
butt.
Nice.
By a water wisp that just grapples around him, swirls around him. Um, and is beginning to pull him under the water. Tommy, the water you're at is sort of chest height. So, but you, 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 you felt something grab your leg. You're going to take four points of damage. Okay. And you're going to be grappled. So you're not going to be, you're gonna, you're gonna have to fight to be able to get out to move. Um, and, um, so, and then for Tuggles, um, you're going to take uh, you are taking five points of damage. You are grappled. And you're starting to be pulled in under the water. Um, as on your way, uh, this sea maiden is still in the water. So, uh, a little, little bit, little bit short of an end on that one. Uh, but we're gonna leave it at that. So basically we'll go straight into the next one. Straight into, into combat order. These guys are gonna have a surprise round, uh, on you. Um, and, uh, we're gonna go through the initiative order from there.
Great job, Tommy. Jumping in.
I need to help her.
I hope you didn't leave your guns in your coat. Can't shoot a gun underwater.
Maybe it would shoot better.
Okay. All right. I had, I had a really cool shot. You guys didn't see. It was awesome. All right.
I think you were just dreaming about that shot.
Oh, dreams? Who dreams?